Thank you. As there are no proclamations this evening, the first item is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the comment portion of the agenda?
We should actually call roll afterwards, but in order to participate in the City Council meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link on the agenda under Public Comment or call 1-669-900-9128 and use webinar ID number 846-8283-2623. To raise your hand to speak in a particular agenda item, please use the Raise Hand button in the Zoom meeting portal. If you are using a telephone, please press *9 on your telephone keypad to raise your hand to speak. Press *6 to unmute your phone. When it is your time to speak, the microphone will be unmuted for the time allotted by the mayor and will be muted upon completion of your comments. Councilmember Cordero.
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Here.
Councilmember Soto.
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Present.
Madam Mayor, Patino. Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, do we have any written comments or speakers this evening?
Madam Mayor, we have one speaker for public comment, and I see no hands raised during our...
Okay. Steven Delara from the Family Service Agency. Good evening, Mr. Delara. It's been a while since you've been here. Welcome.
And it's good to be back, I must say. Madam Chair, members of City Council, I'm Steve Delara, the Deputy CEO of Family Service Agency and Santa Maria Valley Youth and Family Center. Today with me is Nancy Johnson, our Clinical Director, and on Zoom is Maria Castro, the Director of our Family Resource Center. We were saddened to hear about the funding allocations being reduced overall for CDBG, and we were reading the staff report, and as an agency that's receiving the minimal amount of $15,000, we didn't see an impact to our budget. But we did want to stand before the City Council and just acknowledge the difficult task that are before all of you in terms of deciding how you make the reductions and then asking that we not be reduced at Family Service Agency because a reduction would be no funding because we couldn't go below the $15,000 mark. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
And I might want to say congratulations to you as well.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, before we continue.
Yes.
We do have one speaker on Zoom who did raise her hand, Philip Cordero. Mr. Cordero?
I think computers are prejudice against Corderos.
Oh, unfortunately, I haven't noted here, just a moment. He's using an older Zoom version, just one moment.
Okay.
Mr. Cordero? Can you unmute your microphone?
Yes.
Yes, yes, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Hello, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and so many City Council members, especially City Council member Cordero, I like our last name. The reason I am writing and commenting this evening as a concerned citizen is due to
Are you there? Mr. Cordero?
...business here who have had multiple break-ins throughout our time and have contacted our Santa Maria Police Department, and I have not seen any follow-up or any, I would say, addressing the concerns in the area. I had an incident involved with our Santa Maria Police Department over the weekend where somebody broke into somebody's car, beating it with a shovel at 4:00 in the morning. I did call the Santa Maria Police Department to only be notified by their new text messaging service that they would send an officer out to be followed up by another text message saying they were busy, and then the officer finally did not respond until 8:00 in the morning after a state police officer living in the neighborhood was flagged out. So my question to the council is, what are you guys doing to address the crime rate in this area and also to address the concerns of this new text messaging program that the city offers for the police department? I just think that it needs to be addressed. There is a rising crime rate in the north end of town, and I appreciate our City Council's focus on building up the Inos Ranch project, but it's coming at a cost to us on the north end of town who live here and are seeing the crime rate rise. So I just ask that the council please look at this, and I am willing to help out however I can, but I just think this is a concern to us on the north end of Santa Maria. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cordero. Mr. Stillwell?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I've been corresponding with Mr. Cordero via email and aware of the issues that he raised, been working with the police department, the police chief on him. So I'll follow up with Mr. Cordero offline, but just as a summary, it was a busy overnight weekend night with a number of calls. So our response to that vehicle break-in wasn't as high a priority as some of the active things we were engaged in. And actually, on the text messaging, we are continuing to refine that, but I do see that as somewhat of a success because in the past, when we didn't have that text messaging, someone wouldn't have heard any information about our response. So at least we'll continue to refine the text messaging, but the intent of that technology is to notify people like Mr. Cordero and others that we did receive their call, we do have it prioritized, we are working on other calls, and we'll get to it. And as he did mention, we did get to it, just not in the timely manner that he expected or that we would have liked to have done that. But I'll follow up with him offline.
Thank you, Mr. Stillwell. Is that it, Madam Clerk? Okay. So that concludes the public comment portion of the agenda. And let's go on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item. In order to expedite the meeting, the consent calendars are approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion? Nope, 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 okay. So do I have a motion?
Seven.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino.
Aye. Next, we have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will hear protests related to the 2022-2023 annual assessments for the city's four landscape maintenance districts, which include Northwest, Northeast, Southwest, South Miller Street, South College Drive, and the 19 associated special benefit zones. Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Excuse me.
The City Council. Tonight, Representative, no landscape maintenance district assessment resolution and plans the new assessment that's upcoming here. The engineer's report created by the city's contractor, Lowland Associates, was presented at the May 72th meeting. These reports each have a 6...
0.6% increase to the current assessment level. It's in keeping with the Consumer Price Index for the urban Los Angeles Riverside Orange County area for the 12-month period ending December 31st of 2021. The intent of tonight's agenda item is for councils to conduct a public hearing and then confirm the assessment as presented to the council at the previous meeting. The authorization for these new assessment amounts will be based on the 2022 Santa Barbara County property tax rules for the deadline late July. Tonight's public hearing on the proposed assessment meets the statutory requirements in state law in which the annual public hearing on this subject of landscape maintenance districts is required. The landscape maintenance districts generates about $4.1 million in revenue specifically to finance the care and maintenance of landscaping throughout the city. The districts have been facing some fiscal and physical challenges over the years, as we've discussed previously, and we're excited to announce a grant from the Caltrans agency to, sorry, CalFire Agency to help us come up with an urban forest management plan to attain short-term goals to identify immediate issues as well as a long-term management plan of our urban forest. We hope to have that presentation for you by this time next year. That concludes my staff report, and there are four resolutions in your packet.
Are there any questions from the council? So I'd like to open this up for a public hearing. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests to speak or written correspondence?
Madam Mayor, not for this item.
Okay. I'd like to close the public hearing and bring this back to the council for any discussion and/or a motion.
When we make a motion, my question is, can we do all four at the same time?
Yeah.
Does each one have to be read individually? They don't? Okay. Okay. Perfect. So, Madam Mayor, I will go ahead and make a recommendation to approve the landscape maintenance district assessment.
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, can you please take the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino.
Aye. Next, we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider a proposed Starbucks drive-through at 408 East Main Street. And the staff report is being made by Director of Community Development, Mr. Ing.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We have a conceptual review for a proposed Starbucks located at the southeast corner of Main Street and Miller. This is a map of the project location. You can see an existing bank building on the project site, and we have a proposed Starbucks for this location. Here's a closer aerial view of the project site. There are some parking spaces and an alley that serves the site. This is a conceptual site plan for the proposed Starbucks. The building is oriented towards Main Street with a drive-through off the alley and some parking spaces to the east. The project is located in the downtown specific plan, and in particular, the gateway district of the downtown specific plan. The gateway district is along the Main Street corridor and provides a sense of entry into the downtown area. The reason why this is before the council this evening, the proposed Starbucks is currently not allowed through the downtown specific plan. The downtown specific plan includes a prohibition on drive-through uses. This is a proposed drive-through use. So under the page for land use, we have a table you can see that's listed under a prohibited use, and so we want to take this before the council to hear your feedback on the proposed drive-through use. There is some language in the downtown specific plan that talks about non-conforming uses. However, we have not had a business in this building and location for many years, and so it's no longer considered a legal non-conforming use. That use has since, is determined to be terminated. However, staff is drafting a proposed language that could allow for the continuance of a drive-through use on the site. And so we've included the language here on this slide. I'll just read it real quickly. "Subject to the approval of a downtown permit, a site with existing drive-in or drive-through infrastructure such as drive-through canopies, lanes, and windows may continue to operate as a drive-through use, change ownership, rebuild, and expand so long as the use of structures do not grow beyond the property where the drive-through infrastructure was legally established." That's, in short, what this means is that if there's an existing drive-through, that we would still allow a drive-through on that site. It doesn't mean that we would allow for drive-through uses throughout the downtown plan, but if there's a property with an existing drive-through, that we would allow it to Yeah, no, there should be more slides, but I can still summarize the request here, and the applicant is also in the audience and has some slides and presentation for the council. But in short, we have a proposed Starbucks on Main and Miller, and it's currently, again, the drive-through use is not allowed, but we have proposed language that could permit the drive-through use, therefore accommodating the Starbucks. This ends staff's presentation, and I welcome any questions you may have.
Any questions of Mr. Ing?
I'd like to hear from the applicant.
Mr. Cordero had a question. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I recall when we did this, one of the things that was either mentioned or maybe written down somewhere was that one of the reasons that we were establishing this downtown specific plan kind of thing was so that people would come downtown, actually get out of their cars and go into the stores and do their shopping, and this doesn't serve that purpose. It's incredibly exciting to see a company as well established as Starbucks to want to move into that facility, as you said, since it's been vacant for so long. But I think it unintentionally goes against some of the things that we were trying to do as a council, to bring people to the community and get them out of their cars, get them out walking around into some of the stores that are around there. And that goes against what we thought, so I'm interested in hearing what some of the other council people have to say, but that doesn't serve our original idea and purpose of it.
Did you have a comment, Ms. Waterfield?
I just wanted to hear from the...
Okay, but there's questions right now, Ms. Ing. Did you have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
My question is pertaining to the drive-through. So the drive-through would be on the alley side of the property, correct? So will that impact traffic on, would that be on Miller?
On Main.
Main.
On Main?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Soto. So what we have right now is just a concept, and so we don't have a formal submittal, and so the orientation of the drive-through is subject to change. This is the current concept iteration, so this particular concept shows the drive-through behind the building on Main Street, but as you can see, there's a driveway access off of Main, and there's also driveway access off of the alley. So I would anticipate that vehicles can access the drive-through both by Main Street and by the alley.
Yeah. My concern, to answer your question, my concern is pertaining to traffic as we've seen in other parts of town with new drive-throughs like Chick-fil-A or over at Inos Ranch, for example, and just the blockade of traffic.
Well, okay, can we, any other questions of Mr. Ing, and then we'll go to the applicant. Did you have any questions, Mr. Cordero?
No.
Ms. Escobedo? Okay. So the applicant is here?
Yes.
So that I don't mess up your name, is that Singlin?
Singlin, yes, ma'am.
Oh, my goodness, okay.
Good shot.
Good shot.
I won't mess it up. Thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you this evening. In working with staff, planning, community development, we've had several iterations here, and I don't know how to use this real well, so maybe you can just press the button. Anyways, so working with staff, we had several iterations in trying to keep with the, thank you, in trying to keep with the concerns of traffic stacking and, and Mr. Cordero, in response to the pedestrian side of things. This all came out of Starbucks wanting to have what's called a drive-through only, which is a DTO. It's 900 square feet, goes exactly against what you were referring to on the downtown specific plan.
Oh, drive-through.
So in working with Starbucks, we have added the pedestrian access, the focal point at the actual hard corner with some sort of patio element with, we'll draw those people that are walking into it and also achieving the convenience of the drive-up patron coming to this unit. This particular unit has an enormous amount of stack, and we wanted to pull that stack off the street so it wasn't a visual eyesore. It still gave the purported look of a unit that is up on the street, pedestrian-friendly. So in doing so, we were able to create this Y situation. As the product, as the project sits right now, it currently meets all downtown specific plan parking codes as it relates to drive-throughs, and your staff has guided me in working on this particular iteration. Going back, my name is Mike Singlin. I've been doing this for, particularly for Starbucks and Chipotle as a preferred developer for the last five to seven years up and down the Central Valley. We have another project going on at Orkut, in Orkut, on Main, excuse me, on Orkut down in Santa Barbara County. Same presentation's occurring tomorrow morning with them. I'm free to offer any answers to any questions you may have. We understand this is a derivative way from your downtown specific plan, but note that we worked real hard to pull into play the pedestrian-friendly access and environment in this area that has not had a lot of new development in several years, and particularly this vacant building's been sitting here for, my recollection, three-plus years. So it's sitting there doing nothing. We will bring and be the new project, the new shiny penny in the, at this intersection and hopefully get your support to go through and do this. We have a very knowledgeable owner. I have certain timetables that I have to meet to, in order to effectuate this, so I would look hopefully for any support that you could give us to process this application in a timely manner.
Any questions of Mr. Singlin?
I don't.
Ms. Waterfield?
Looking at the map, are you going to rearrange where the drive-through is? Are you going to keep it right where it is? Will you make any changes to that building? You would tear it down, build back up?
We are, so let's go back here. So as you see it right now, the pickup window, I would say, is on the southeast quadrant of the existing bank, and the main drive aisle that runs between the alley north all the way to Main, everything west of that will be demolished, ground just torn down. We will then tear, as we tear it all down, you can see where the same drive aisle goes north-south and between the alley and Main Street. Everything to the west of that would be the new configuration of the building and the drive-through lane with the stack.
Okay, so you're, and in my mind, I'm thinking it would be like a Chick-fil-A where you've got two lanes coming in.
We call it a Y lane. Yes, in this case, this would be a Y lane.
A Y lane, okay.
And it would not be a, two, like, they call them partners, the partners are employees of Starbucks, they would not be out at this area because we have such a significant number of cars in the stack. General code up and down the valley that I have to deal with on a regular basis, anywhere between seven and 10 cars, and I can't see that far because I'm blind, but I think I have almost 14 or 15 cars for this particular unit. There is no indoor café seating in this one. This is, that's why we added the patio element to bring the pedestrians across the street, and we have the 11 parking stalls for people to park. And if I remember correctly, there's street parking here also.
How many DTOs do you have?
Street parking?
How many have I done? I've done...
Currently here, in this area?
Not in this area. Starbucks asked me to come over here into this area, and I said, they'd call me and say, Mike, can you, can you figure this out and get it entitled and approved within certain jurisdictions? So Fresno, Bakersfield, Merced, Merced and Fresno, I have two breaking ground in the next 90 days. They're 900 square feet, same type of scenario with the Y lane stack. Bakersfield, as I said, Lathrop, Patterson, Paradise, I actually got that one done before, unfortunately, four months before the fires came. So we've been, I've been very active up and down the Central Valley, and now I've been asked to get involved in the Central Coast.
Can I get the map of the downtown area, please?
Yes, sir.
I'm not done.
What?
I'm not done. I need the map because I need to make more comments.
Is that Chinese? Present, presentation.
There we go, yeah. So that one we have, okay, so the location of that, I'm looking at this whole downtown area, and when we first went into and started talking about the downtown area, we also discussed that, you know, we made provisions of what we wanted there, but since it was our policy, we could change our policy as different businesses came in, you know, that would probably be a good fit, would be an attraction, and around the area, you know, whether we would have drive-throughs in the immediate area, I would say no. But looking at Miller and Main Street to where it's further away from the downtown area has a lot of benefits, in my opinion. You know, people aren't going to be completely walking past Miller if you're going to be in the downtown area. On Elizabeth, we have what is that drive-in that we go through, Chung? That used to be Little Jaco's and where people actually drove up and sat or just came, and that's within this district as well. So we want anchor places that will attract for the downtown area, but this particular business is away from it to where it doesn't interfere with a lot of the traffic. And this is, this is what we decided when we made the downtown policy, is that we could change whatever we needed to change to make it more accommodatable to those businesses. So it's nothing that we've had solid that we said we could do or we could not do. And I think with this piece of property that's been sitting there for well over seven years, it has a drive-through. It just makes sense to me. Those are my comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In regards to, if we can go back to the map with the proposed Starbucks on the line, yeah, that one. So I'm looking at that map, and I see that as the main entrance, it's Main Street. Is that...
Yes, sir. That's the existing, that's the existing conditions. We are not touching anything on Main Street, nor do we want to, and because of Caltrans, it would take me two years, I hate to be honest.
Oh, it'd take more than that.
I was being nice.
Two years.
I'm sorry, I flew in from Dallas this morning. I'm a little tired.
So basically, how I see it, it's people will enter through Main Street, then get on the, one of the two lines on the south side.
Correct.
And then exit again on Main Street. That's basically kind of like the...
So our traffic pattern we see as, is the Main Street traffic heading east is the going-to-work site, and that is, you know, the coffee route. People heading north on Miller would turn in and then utilize the alley. So we feel we'll be grabbing them off of Main for the eastbound traffic, and if they want to keep going back on Main, they can go eastbound on the alley to, I believe it's School Street, which parallels Miller, go back up north and head further east. If they want to come out of the drive-through lane, they come back south to the alley, they head west in the alley, north on Miller, which gives them a four-point turning radius. So it's pulling everything off of Main Street. We have the stacking down on the south side of the guidance and staff, and I didn't like it at first, but I understand it now. Everyone's concerned about the Chick-fil-A problem, the In-N-Out problem, the stacking problem. It's the 800-pound gorilla in the room. By pulling the stack down, as far as we've done, the ability for cars to stack on Main Street, if it was to be that profitable, is virtually not going to happen because the partners will come out and they will guide the people, and unfortunately, if it does get that way, it'll get stacked into the alley. That will be a really big unit, sales volume-wise, if we ever got into that situation, greater than the cars we have here. I deal with it on every single location that we deal with. I answer that question all the time. We've been conditioned on it, if it's a problem, that the partners, Starbucks, has to address it through Coning and Manning out in the overflow areas. So it's, like I said, it's an 800-pound gorilla, we know how to address it, we deal with it all the time.
So they will be still able to exit Miller or School?
Or Main.
Or Main.
We will be putting that pork chop in, which I would call, only gives the right end, so if you look at the, kind of the concrete divider, so that will not, that'll prevent people from trying to illegally cross over and go back westbound on Main. So we'll put the pork chop in, so the people that are traveling north, because of the blockade, the cement that's there, it'll drive them east. Does that...
They wouldn't be able to go west on Main anyway, coming out of there.
No, there's already a...
There's already a median there, isn't there? Okay, okay, excuse me. Confusing my projects.
One more thing, you mentioned that there will be not indoor seating?
Correct. I, I say that today. Operations may come back and may put a table or two inside, but the machine itself, where everything exists, where you, where the pastries and everything is made, is a little over 950 square feet. So we built this as large as we could to accommodate the parking codes required per your, per your code, which is credits for the stacking and so many parking stalls per thousand square feet as required by the code. So we have to shav 14, which 11 on-site and there's a three, three stall credit, one for every 250 linear feet of stack. So that gives us the 14 and by mathematics, we backed into 1340 square feet.
Yep. I'm asking this because, I mean, Starbucks, once we get to closer to the winter, start getting a little bit chill, chilling outside. People, I mean, I've been, I have had meetings indoors.
Right.
So, you know, it's a, for something that is going downtown, it would be, from my point of view, appropriate to have indoors. You know, there's lighting, people will be, you know, be able to do their homework, will be able to, to meet up, so.
We are, we are completely open to that accommodation as we get to the next step. If we can get through this process, we would be open to a portion of the inside being, inside seating. There is a concern of the partners and just overall safety right now going on in the world and that is held very near and dear. That's why they really only wanted to put a 900-square footer here because of the concern of safety for their partners. So, but we, at the encouragement of staff, have increased it to this size so that we could accommodate that, provided, you know, we don't run into any safety issues. Thank you.
Ms. Water, have you finished, Mr. Escobedo? Okay, Ms. Waterfield, you got a question?
Yes. I'm just going to be really blunt about this whole thing because we, we, as we sit up here and as our planning commissioner sits where they sit, we're told a lot of things by a lot of developers that this won't happen and that won't happen. And I know stacking is what the council is very concerned about, especially on Main Street, to have that, that stacking, because you've got the red light right there and those lights may not, you know, be connected to, you know, the stop and the go and everything else. So what would you do to change this if, if the council happened to say this, you know, this would be a good project, but we don't want absolutely no stacking and on the sign, on the, at the sign of a first stacking, we need to do something about it?
So if I can clarify your ques, can I ask deeper into your question? Your concern is the stacking that would be on Main Street?
On Main Street going east.
Going east.
Yes.
That could be, we would be fine with the condition that if that ever happened, we, you know, you can make it a condition of ours, you know, if we're going to call it a condition used permit or we're going to call it a modification of the downtown specific, specific plan, we can accept a condition that cones would be set up. I'm doing it right now in, in Santa Barbara County, right down, same, same situation than where they're building the new grocery outlet down there. We have to put cones in to divert them back west away from the exiting off of the future road A getting built right there on Clark.
Cones would be put where on this property?
So in, in this case, the cones would be put out so that the cars, if they were to, let's take the, the northern entrance, the, of the Y lane. We could put cones there so that it would, it would divert people so they could not enter there. They would have to go through, around and loop around and come down the alley, head back west down through the alley or come eastbound through the alley. And your concern should be the same for Miller Street.
Absolutely.
If they're all coming westbound on, coming westbound down the alley and hanging the 90-degree U-turn, very easily, we could back up in that if this is a, I call it a bomber, that's my acronym of a sales unit. So the, the condition could be that cones and the partner, the partners, the employees of Starbucks would be conditioned upon, if they are put on notice, which would be a call from traffic, Public Works or whoever, that we have a problem out here on Monday mornings from 5:00 AM till whatever time, that a partner has to stand out there and direct traffic. They're doing it in Modesto right now at Jan. 9th Street.
And they do that on the property?
On the property. The traffic, no, the traffic in this case, I think, because you still want to accommodate, you have to for the ADA access of the cars for ADA, you can't have a stacking blocking an ADA stall.
Correct.
So the reality is, if this was a bomber, and I, we believe it'll be a good unit, the stacking will probably, on the overflow, in a, in a worst-case scenario, would probably be heading east down, down the alley, so the traffic, the flow would be west and right in and then left into the drive-through lane. I think that's your, that's your, that's your solve, that's your condition if we got to that situation. But I'm open to conversations on this.
Okay, perfect.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but are we open for conversation amongst the council?
Not yet. I want to see if we have any requests to speak, then I'll bring it back to the council. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak? Written correspondence?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We did, have received one written communication from Kathy Shabram opposing the proposed project due to the number of Starbucks in town and its proximity to the small business of Joby's. We have no requests to speak in the building. I do have one hand raised in Zoom.
Go ahead.
Patricia Solario. Hold on one just a moment. Ms. Solario?
Oh, sorry. Yes, please, I have to unmute. Thank you. Good evening, council. I just wanted to, also, just my concern for, I, I just don't see the need for an additional Starbucks in, in our city and we have two small businesses within the proximity that sell pastries and coffee and they are local owners and I would hope that we could support, you know, not diverting businesses away, business away from those local, locally businesses, which includes Joby's and Gina's Piece of Cake, which is just in the mall. So, yeah, I, I hope that you all would consider that. In addition to the, what you all have spoken about is that it's, it's not, there shouldn't be any drive-throughs in this area. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero, are you going to ask a question?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Sir, the, the term "drive-through" has been mentioned several times.
Yes, sir.
And it's even been related to, well, the drive-through is going to be in the same place as the existing drive-through. So there's some sort of implication there that, that the drive-through is the same. Do you feel that, that the drive-through for the Starbucks and the drive-through for the prior bank business is the same as a drive-through because you, you drive up and you, you do business and then you end up leaving?
Well, I think by, I think by definition, if you were to be in an automobile and you, and you, and you advanced your car to a point where a service was rendered and then you left that point where the service was rendered and exited, I would say yes, I would say they do mean the same, in my opinion, by definition of what a drive-through for service is. And these are both, for the bank, it was service for financial reasons and for Starbucks, it's this case of picking up a coffee.
That's, that's an excellent comment with regard to what it is, but in, not just the definition, in the reality of what it is, do you think that they're the same? Now, I mean, what they do business?
I, I understand where you're, and I'm a very transparent person. No, I don't. So I'm going to be dead honest, that's who I am, that's who I am. Are they two different motions? No, they're the same motion. It's a car actively picking up something and leaving and doing that. Is a bank traffic drive-through lane different than that of a restaurant or a coffee shop? By definition, yes, they are. But they're both providing a service.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Ms. Water?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My comments are that what has been echoed by some of my colleagues, just concerns around traffic flow on East Main Street, on, on Miller Street and on School Street, there, there is a nearby school there as well and so thinking about traffic jams and just more traffic on that school where there's already, St. Mary's already closes off a street, it just, it, it, it adds a level of concern and going, and then to the point of the downtown specific plan, my concern there is if it's solely a drive-through, it, as Mr. Cordero said, it, it goes against what, what the council's original intent was with the downtown specific plan and really creating vibrancy and opportunity for folks to, to dine in and, and have it be a pedestrian-friendly atmosphere and this definitely takes away from that. To Mr. Escobedo's point of needing something that's dine-in to take meetings, that's more of the, of the, of what I've also been hearing from constituents, like this, this, this need for a, a coffee shop or, or some sort of like dine-in where you can use Wi-Fi and, and E and, and host meetings and that, that's more of, of the need that, that I've been hearing for constituents. And then another point that I just want to elevate is the vast number of coffee drive-through businesses that the planning commission has been approving left and right, including with now Dutch Brothers, just Starbucks and if I recall, or my understanding is that planning commission was also recently discussing the East Main Street by the 101, that's Starbucks and that one also getting a drive-through. And so I think...
Down there?
Yeah, right here. And so, and so now they're in conversations with like Home Motors and I don't know what. And so I think that for the purposes of our downtown specific plan, thinking about our, our original intent as a council for, for setting that in place as well as just the traffic jam that, that we may see, I, I don't feel comfortable approving something, one, when I hear that, oh, we can pivot if it becomes a problem, I'd rather just avoid the problem if necessary. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, if I may, there's one approved just recently at 525 South Broadway. It is a drive-through coffee shop. So that's just, it's in the same area, so to speak. It's not as close to the mall as, as, as this gentleman's project, but that's close enough that you could, well, if I can't get my coffee here, I can go over here and get it and not lose any time, probably.
Okay, I, I'd like to make a few comments. Going back to focus groups, even before, before I was even on the city council and talking about what we want the downtown specific plan to look like and what we want the downtown to look like. And, you know, it, and I think we probably all agree, it's, the downtown has been sort of a sacred cow with us and we're very protective of it and we've got two members that sit on that committee to make sure it's, it's sort of careening down the right slopes. And I, I've, I've driven that several times, just looking at it. So if you're going east on Main Street and you're stopped at the light, say the first car stopped at the light and he decide, he or she decides they're going to turn in there, you've got enough for three cars to back up. Now, we have problems going down East Main Street, there's a pizza shop there, when people pull in there, they have a hard time pulling in the driveway, cars will be stacked up, six and seven cars down there, it's already a problem. Then I see what we did over on McCoy Lane and so then we had to put up cones and put, that was a big mistake that we allowed. Then you're talking about going down the alley. People live there, they're not going to be happy with this. But, you know, and I, I don't know if there's, I haven't heard from anyone that lives back there, but they live down that alley and alleys, we don't really use alleys to get around here in Santa Maria. And I know it's been sitting there for seven years, but you know, we made a big mistake when we allowed a business to come in across the street because it, the building had been sitting there empty for a long time and it did nothing to enhance the downtown. So I, I am not, I'm, I, I think it looks great, I think it's wonderful, it's just the wrong place and so I am not going to be supporting this. And you know, I, I know you come here and you probably think there's not a lot of traffic in Santa Maria and a lot of people feel that way because you come from someplace else, but people are really, I mean, we all get calls all the time about, "Do something about the traffic here." So anyway, but thank you very much for coming. Any other comments?
Right ahead, sir.
So, yeah, I mean, I would like to, there are some, some ideas and some that I've been catching from, from the council in regards to, and I do share their concerns in regards to traffic, Main Street is specific, I mean, especially it's a, it's a just... I've, I've been to that pizza place and I've...
Little Caesars.
Yeah, yeah. I've been to Little Caesar and it's, one of the reasons I stopped going is because of the, the danger of, you know, pulling in and it just a little bit, and even it's a little bit sketchy going from behind and just taking up, it's the alley, it's a, even when you're trying to, to go to, I believe, take a School Street through the alley, you don't, it's hard to see who's walking on the sidewalk, so you gotta be really careful on that. And the other thing, we have Starbucks less than one mile away from, from that location and, and there's, in a small, there's a coffee shop, a local coffee shop right in front of, really close by. I think it's, the pride looks good. I think it's a, it might be just not the, the right place and, yeah, I would, I wouldn't, I would, I wouldn't support it this time.
Any comments, Mr. Cordero? Are you finished commenting?
I'll be finished.
Okay. So, Mr. Ng, you got the messages?
Thank you.
And I want to finish, finish with my comments here. My, my colleagues do bring up a lot of good points. I did not think of St. Mary's School for, so thank you for thinking about that with the teachers coming, or, or mothers and fathers coming in and picking up children and those sorts of things. And I gotta admit, I did not think about the homes as well as I'm looking at this picture and it backs right up to a lot of backyards here. So I, I, I think it's a great concept. I just wish it was just further down the road a little bit towards the east, which you see a little Japanese restaurant in an empty lot, but can't do anything about that. I, you know, I, I could go either way and I will probably, because of, of my, our colleagues, I, I will probably vote for it, be in support of it, but it won't do any good at this point.
Am I still allowed to speak? I don't know if I am still allowed.
Absolutely.
Sarah, go ahead.
And, and, and all of your points are extremely valid. No, I, I think bad operators from past history don't necessarily make bad operators for the future. The comment, Mayor, that you had mentioned on the eastbound traffic at the red light of Main and Miller and taking, as your example, the pizza place, if you were to take a distance in a car by, by architectural standards, it's 20 feet long, if you were to take from that stoplight to the entrance into Main, off of Main into the site, you probably have 60 feet, probably closer to 70. That's three cars. And as you come down, call it almost 150 feet, there's another seven cars. So you have 10 cars that would create this stacking that you're dealing with at the pizza joint. Now you have another 14 that are going in through this Y lane and there, so that's 24 cars. When the normal code in most jurisdictions is seven, you have, to create a problem, you have to be at 24 cars. So I just throw that out there and I said, I don't disagree with your concerns as you should have them, that's your job to do, but I think in the math, when you, when you physically look at it, if you're going to put a car there, the odds of those cars, and this is not going to be a three and a half, $4 million store, this is only 1,300 square feet, there's only so much coffee that can be pumped out of a unit. So I just wanted to interject the, the mathematics side of the concerns that though I respect them, I think they're, they're probably not right in this situation, in my humble opinion.
Thank you. Ms. Waterfield?
Something just occurred to me, Mr. Chung, and we had been having meetings about the downtown area, about making Broadway more narrow, more pedestrian-friendly and that, that narrowness would go down towards the, the Starbucks, intended Starbucks.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Waterfield, there is a, there's an adopted downtown streetscape plan and that has a proposed design for both Main and Broadway that includes expanded sidewalks, reduced vehicle travel lanes so that the streets can be more pedestrian-friendly. And it's still in a design concept at the moment. We received some engineering comments from Caltrans that questioned the, the feasibility of those designs. So I would say that there's still an overall vision, but at this time, no immediate plans for implementation.
It's years down the road, decades probably. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we don't need, we don't need a vote on this at all. We don't need a vote on this at all. Okay, just direction of staff. Thank you very much, Mr. Singler.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Can I say one more thing, Madam Mayor?
Sure. Mr. Cordero?
It was mentioned that maybe they thought this was a bad plan. I don't think this is a bad plan, and I actually think I can speak for all of my colleagues here. It's not a bad plan. Nobody does it any better than Starbucks. I mean, Starbucks is the gorilla in the business. I mean, they know what they're doing. It's just putting it right there. And I think that we've kind of said that a number of times, maybe right idea, just wrong place. I'm excited to see that Starbucks still has an interest in our community. Just it presents problems that we foresee that could happen. And I hope this doesn't deter Starbucks from continuing to look for viable locations in our community, but it's certainly not a bad plan, just not for right there.
And I totally appreciate that. And another reason, someone brought up Starbucks a mile away. There's a reason why we're coming so close. That one's busy. Let's take pressure off, let's keep the sales in Santa Maria. So many times, cities, planning commissions, city councils will say, well, there's one and a half, I'm doing one a half a mile down the street from one in Merced, half a mile, a DTO which is only 900 feet, because the unit a half a mile away is doing $70,000 a week. They have to take pressure off it. They want to keep the sales in their jurisdiction. So I'm not part of the project on Broadway, on the other side of the freeway, but I do know that that's not my project, but that is coming down the pipeline. And I want to say they're maybe relocating the cafe to that one, so I don't know. But they're pulling it farther off the street. But I appreciate all your input. Not the first time I've heard it, probably won't be the last. Whatever I can do to help accommodate, if there's a way to, you know, noodle on the plan that makes you feel more comfortable, I'm open to suggestions. But I think your message is loud and clear, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. We hope it's not the last time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Next, we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will discuss the model lease 2020 agreement-
And receive public comment. Okay, and the staff report is to be made by Assistant City Manager, Mr. Hackelman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Pleased to be with you this evening. I have a brief staff report for you. It's a receive and file. I wanted to start by just kind of setting up the context of what this presentation is about. We're here in 2022, we're two years into a 10-year policy that the council voted for in November of 2019. And this agreement is really got a lot of rich and deep history behind it for a number of decades, actually. And so the presentation that I want to go over with you today, we'll cover on the next slide here, if it functions for me.
Oh, yay.
You probably need to give me training, John. Okay. So on this slide here, I just want to cover a brief overview where I want to talk about the historical context, because it's a good refresher, and some of the council members may not have been here the last time around when this analysis was done and the policy was crafted and implemented. I also want to talk about the lease terms, what's in the model lease agreement right now as it stands, and current status of the 2020 model lease. So what's happening right now as this lease has been implemented and it's in use out there in our mobile home park communities? And finally, an opportunity for the council to discuss and hear public comment. All right, so the historical context, so this goes back a long time, really. So in 1999, the city council first made a decision to implement a model lease. But this was after, you know, rent control had been considered by the city council in years 1981, 1982, 1984, and in 1990. And this lease was implemented, and a follow-up, a decade later, was implemented for another 10 years. So we've had, you know, those 20 years of model leases. And at the end of that term, at the end of that policy for 10 years, the city council began analysis and discussion, community engagement with stakeholders like residents of mobile home parks, mobile home park owners, staff, and other representatives to discuss tweaks that might need to be made to the model lease, or what should best serve the residents of mobile home communities and the mobile home park owners. And so this discussion and analysis went on for a couple of years, actually. And in 2019, the council in November adopted the, another 10-year model lease. And that model lease was, has been signed by six mobile home parks. So the city of Santa Maria has 14 mobile home parks, and there are approximately 1,558 spaces in all of these parks within the city limit. But these total spaces for these six parks that are signed onto the model lease represent just over 79% of the total spaces. So it is the preponderance and the majority, really, of all of the mobile home park spaces out there. And this model lease is currently in effect. So moving forward into kind of the terms of this model lease, it seeks to make sure that there's a balance between park owners and the businesses that they run, and providing some predictability and stability, and some upper restraints and lower restraints on rates for leases. And so the 2020 terms of the model lease, you know, the discussions here, there were formal meetings that were held in earnest in 2019. There were five of these meetings that were agendized, where stakeholders had discussions. And kind of the terms were discussed and ultimately brought before the council for a decision. One of the features of this model lease is that there's also an enforcement component to the agreement. And that enforcement component was important, because, you know, we wanted to make sure, the city wanted to make sure, and park residents wanted to make sure that there was some teeth in the agreement that would hold, that would ensure that they had that predictability and security in this agreement. And so, you know, there's also annual rent adjustment based on 100% of the Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index. And there's also a limitation, there can be no more than 6% of previous rent, plus a percentage of capital expenditures. And there's a set deposit for one month's rent. On sale or transfer, there can only be an increase of up to 7.5%, and only every five years. So no matter how many sales transact in the space of five years, so one owner of a mobile home selling to another, selling to another, it doesn't matter how many there are, whether there's one or 100, that increase upon transfer can only occur once in a five-year span. And so where we're at today, the current status of the model lease, is that, you know, six parks use this model lease, or it's offered at six parks. And again, representing approximately 79% of the total mobile home spaces in the city of Santa Maria. One model lease enforceability event has been reported to the city in the two years that the lease has been in effect. That particular complaint, that issue, was resolved promptly by the city attorney's office. And it resulted in the lease being offered to the individual, who subsequently declined that lease. And from the information we were provided, the resident chose to go with the park owner's lease. And our understanding is that those, the park leases at these parks have similar terms to what's in the model lease. Fiscal impacts? So the model lease is cost-effective for the city. It doesn't require the overhead of having a robust housing function within the city. Rent control, rent stabilization ordinance would increase staff time by 40 to 100 hours. And that's just an estimate based on looking at other cities and how they operate. And then at a minimum, in order to just understand what we would need to do to be able to do such an ordinance, we would have to hire an outside consultant to help us understand what type of program would need to be built. And that would cost a significant amount of money as well. And so the reason that this, one of the reasons the city went with this path is that it provided that balance for the community interest, while also being efficient and cost-effective with taxpayer dollars. And the community impacts, you know, it allows the city to support residents, as well as to keep tenant landlord relations productive through facilitation and enforcement of the model lease. Now, that concludes this presentation, but speaking to kind of the bigger components that need to be considered, and some of the reasons why the council made the policy, the decision that it did a couple of years ago, it ultimately comes down to how these types of policy decisions impact consumers, but also impact our local economy, and how incentives are aligned in such a way that can result in good things happening, but also things that can have unintended consequences. And so on Zoom right now is Professor, Dr. Peter Rupert from UCSB. He's an economist, and we've asked him to make comments about the policies related to rent control, and also rent, model lease type agreements, and how they are shown to have impact on local communities and local governments. So if Peter is on the line right now, I'd like to turn it over to him for a few minutes.
Mr. Rupert, are you online?
I am online. Can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hackelman. And Madam Mayor and council members, thank you. Thank you for the time. I have to say that, you know, I'm not employed by any landlords or tenants units or anything. I'm just a professor at UCSB, I run the Economic Forecast Project. And, you know, my views are, you know, based on lots of research, some of which I have done, and most of it I have not done, on rent control. However, no one's really done anything on mobile homes, I have to say. So, you know, what I'm going to say a little bit about is just, you know, some of the devastating effects that rent control has. And I asked Mr. Hackelman to, I sent him something I wrote up, it's on our Forecast Project site, that basically talks about rent control all over the world. And as we start to see housing prices rise, obviously, rents follow. And, you know, my guess is that, you know, that now we're seeing, you know, rent control being thought of in many, many places in the United States, and some are just activated just recently. But what's the bigger picture, you know, I want to bring to you, is, you know, what problem are we really trying to solve? I mean, we're trying to, we all know that rents are high, we have affordable housing problems. What would an economist say? Economists would say, you know, it's all about supply and demand. And if you look at what rent control does, you know, it creates incentives that are basically all wrong in terms of those goals that we're trying to achieve, which is try to get lower rent for our community. And so what we need there is really about supply and demand, and figuring out a way to grow our cities in an appropriate way. I like the model lease, by the way, just to let you know. I think it's something that I think is very innovative. Getting landlords and tenants together and hashing it out is really the way to go. I gave a presentation at the Santa Barbara City Council, and, you know, luckily, they kind of ditched the current proposal to study rent control, and decided to form a committee to really talk about alternatives to rent control. And of all the studies I looked at, from Sweden to San Francisco to you name it, almost every place has tried it. It's failed miserably. And, you know, it's really devastating for the people we're trying to help. And one quick example is in San Francisco, someone did a study in the top journal in economics, and they instituted rent control. And basically, it reduced the supply of available apartments by about 15%. And overall, it caused a citywide rent increase, because not every place was controlled. What these rules are, are very, what we call distortionary. They're going to distort the incentives. And what happens then is the landlords are less willing to fix up the place, they make it, they let it run down. You would have to form a rent stabilization board. I know Santa Monica has one. I think their annual budget is about $5 million for that, 20 FTE. They bring about more regulation, which is again something we don't want to do. And I mentioned the loss of supply. So how can this happen in a mobile home park? Well, if they're constrained enough by regulations, that is, they can't get their return on investment, nothing stops them from saying, you know what, I'm going to turn this into condos. I'm just going to rip it all down and start over. And so, again, it kind of hurts. And the biggest thing I have is really about what's called political economy. And I think there, people worry a lot about the loss of trust to our policymakers. And that is, you know, we set up this, these guidelines, we did this model lease, now you're changing it on us. What's next? Is next going to be rent control on other apartments? So I think we, policymakers lose a lot of trust by making those decisions without consulting both landlords and renters, which is why I like the model lease. And finally, what are the solutions? Well, you know, I think the solutions, there are many. A very interesting example is Minneapolis-St. Paul, who just in the last year, St. Paul started the most restrictive rent control policy in the United States. They saw construction of new apartments go down by 80% in just four months. On the other hand, Minneapolis did something completely opposite. They banned single-family home zoning. So all zoning now in Minneapolis is not single-family, and they can put up two units or three units. The last one is figure out ways to build cheaper. Obviously, mobile homes are one, manufactured homes are another. And so I think that there are solutions out there that we could look at. So anyway, that's the concerns I wanted to raise, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Waterfield had a question of you, Dr. Rupert.
Good afternoon or good evening, Dr. Rupert, and thank you so much for your comments. My question is, a lot of the, a lot of the concerns with residents living in mobile home parks is that their income. Now, is there a government rent assistance program that can help them out?
That's a great question. I think, you know, I don't know all the details of Section 8 housing, for example, but I do deal with HUD fairly often, in terms of Section 8 policy. And, you know, if it's very, very difficult to get, I can tell you that they're really ready to work. It's a federal program, you know, that works, I think, pretty good. There are some problems with it, but, you know, overall, yes, there's a federal program that delivers housing assistance. I don't know the details of the mobile home industry with Section 8, but that's something I would certainly work on. The other would be, you know, trying to get some, you know, some grants out there that would do something, which I call rent stamps, which is basically like food stamps, that, you know, we understand that some people cannot afford the rent. And so what we could do is, you know, figure out a better way to transfer money to those who really need it, rather than, you know, something like rent control that we know is devastating in the longer run.
Would that be something that the city would have to take on as far as rent stamps? Or would that be something that just a government person would go and talk to the people in the mobile home parks?
I think that, well, first of all, I believe there's some state money that could be available to do such a thing for these pilot programs. That's something I've started to work on. I will talk to the people, you know, in the state. You know, I think, you know, for example, the Section 8 housing things I did, I estimate right now that, like in Santa Barbara, we're giving out about $1,200 a month for those people for assistance through Section 8. And so you could just, you know, do a little arithmetic, and we believe that about 1,000 more people need that assistance. And so one of the ideas we had was to increase a little bit, or take part of the TOT tax, and use that as a pilot program along with the state. So I think there's some very innovative ways we could think about, you know, to solve that problem.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any questions, Dr. Rupert? Oh, Ms. Soto?
Thank you. So many great ideas. My question is more directed to our staff. I know, thank you for providing the background and the context. My question is that after, you talked about the- My question is that after, you talked about the, after a council meeting in 1999, or the council at the time moved forward with a model lease program. My understanding was that when the council in 2018 started having these conversations, there was a lot of uncertain, there wasn't a lot of awareness on that 1999 model lease. And so can you explain to me why there was a lack of knowledge on behalf of the mobile home park owners and the residents when it came to that decision that was made in 1999? And why so little of the mobile home park owners actually moved forward with like offering that to their residents?
So I'm going to defer to the city manager, but my belief is that the enforceability component wasn't in that lease agreement. But I wasn't here at that time, but city manager still well was.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Soto. And we do have public, I anticipate public comment from folks who were here then working through it. So that was, so the first 20 years of the model lease, it was not enforceable. And one, there were a couple of issues on the last iteration, two years ago, with the park owners and the homeowners that we worked on. And one was getting it more enforceable and the second was working to assure that the park owners were providing it to the people to have it as an option. So I'm not, I mean, we can hear maybe from public comment of, you know, why it wasn't as noticed before and why it wasn't as utilized before, but that was one of, those were the two primary issues that we sought to address with this current version of the enforceable model lease.
Thank you. You mentioned enforceability. Can you remind me how the current model lease is enforceable again?
It's a civil enforcement. So we are, we facilitate the agreement between the model lease and maybe Heather can expand on it further, but, you know, we don't, we're not a party to the agreement. We are helping facilitate the compliance of the agreement. So if someone wants our help and comes to us, we can offer some advice, we can facilitate, we can help them get to legal aid. But so we don't have, we're not a direct provider or party to the model lease.
Are there any more questions for Dr. Rupert? Oh, for Dr. Rupert right now? Did you have any questions? Okay. Okay, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I just wanted to clarify that. Okay. Go ahead.
Were you going to add?
No, I just saw you look to me. I would concur with what the city manager said. The city entered into an agreement with the park owners that says that the city will make sure that the model lease is made available to the residents in the parks that have agreed to do that. And part of that agreement between the city and the park owners has a mechanism, a civil remedy whereby if the park is not providing the model lease, is not abiding by the model lease, when someone chooses the model lease, then the city attorney's office will move forward with that civil remedy to ensure that that happens. And as was briefly discussed by Mr. Hackelman, the only time that our office has been notified of a problem with park owners' use of the model lease, there was only one incident and a park apparently had not provided the lease to a new tenant and a resident, excuse me. And as soon as it was brought to our attention, the city attorney reached out to the park owner and it was immediately provided to that person and then ultimately declined. But so there is a mechanism and we have been applying it if needed.
Please correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding, based on the staff report, is that six out of the 15?
14, ma'am.
14, thank you. 14 parks in the city have offered the model, the enforceable model lease to their residents. What has been the issue with the other parks?
So the issue with the other parks, it's been varying. So some of those parks have been a little bit difficult to get a hold of and others have just not voluntarily agreed to sign on to that agreement with the city.
So my understanding is that it's only enforceable if the park owner offers it to the resident and then the resident signs off of it and there's a breach in that agreement, correct?
Well, first, the park owner has to enter into the agreement with the city and that agreeing to offer that model lease. And then that becomes something that the city, like the city attorney mentioned, that there's a civil remedy if that, if there's any violation of that agreement, say they don't offer it.
Currently with the enforceable model lease that we have, I know that Dr. Rupert mentioned that some of the things that are, part of his research, what he, what his conclusion, essentially, part of his conclusion is that when cities or jurisdictions adopt a rent stabilization ordinance, that there, that there could be moments that, you know, the land gets sold and the park can be demolished and redeveloped into condominiums or another type of housing. Is there something in place with the current enforceable model lease that prevents that?
There's nothing in the model lease that prevents a park owner from selling their property or using it for something else. Having talked to Dr. Rupert, I believe that the conclusion that he's come to and I guess other economists have is that when rent stabilization or rent control is implemented, that it puts a lot of constraints on the property owner that then cause, you know, the use maybe not to have the highest and best value so that it may become more valuable than to, his example, tear it down and put up condominiums because they're no longer able to compete with the appreciation or the inflation of what other properties are doing in the community.
Mr. Soto, is it, is it, in my, I thought I had seen somewhere that we had some sort of ordinance or policy at the city level that, or is that a state type of law that if a large number of, like in this case, mobile home park residents were to be displaced because of a resale and redevelopment, that there would be some sort of compensation to those residents if it's a large number of tenants? Is that, is that something that exists?
I'm not familiar with that law.
Councilmember Soto, one thing to keep in mind is that many of these leases are fairly long-term in nature and they all begin and end in, at different times. And so there's no, likely no one very large cohort where the lease is terminated at one particular time.
Okay. And so my promise for now, my last question is, can you remind me of the six mobile home parks that, mobile home park owners who have offered the enforceable model lease? How many of those tenants or spaces have actually signed on to it?
That is, so we have data on some of that. It's relatively few. So taking, I believe it's Rancho Buena Vista, but I could be wrong. There, I think there are 420 spaces, 415 or 420, and a vast majority are on the park's long-term lease, something on the order of over 400. And there's only a small handful that are on the model lease. And so there, and this is a voluntary decision on the part of the residents. And then there are, there are still others that are choosing to be on a short-term, one-year lease, which is another small percentage.
Those are all my questions for now. Thank you.
Mr. Cordaro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hackelman, you're quickly becoming our resident expert on model leases and mobile home parks in our community. So thank you for the report that you've given to bring us up to date. As you know things now and in reading your document that you presented to us, we essentially entering into, entering into an ordinance environment, we have to establish an infrastructure for this within the city, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And that would mean people to manage it and once we have a law in the books and something goes awry, regardless of where it comes from, regardless of who's wrong, then our local city attorney must defend that. That, and so as opposed to it is how it is now, where we've, we've had the incident, came up, one incident in two years. And we pushed that back on the parties involved and it was resolved basically by the parties involved. Is that right?
That's, that's correct.
Whereas if we end up in a courtroom over this, then we're going to have to defend that ordinance, which you and I know this, and I think probably the community knows this, that that gets into the hundreds of thousands of dollars very, very quickly. Lawyers, lawyers, not all lawyers, but lawyers are not friendly to the cheap dollar. It can cost a lot of money to defend something when we really don't have a say on what side it goes to. We're just trying to defend our ordinance. And I, and I see that as an unintended consequence, possibly, having to defend something that we end up writing and one party, whether it's a park owner or whether it's a park tenant or park resident, no matter which one comes up not happy with it, we're faced with the defense of that particular ordinance. That's, that's an unintended and an unpleasant consequence, in my opinion. We have to deal with that. Whereas, whereas it is now, we're depending on these people, of which we've had one incident, to resolve this and that incident was resolved in a relatively short space of time, according to Heather. And so I'm just wondering, but we, now, we've all been here for a couple of years now when Gary has come in and several other people have said, hey, we're, this is happening and they, they need this. And so, so I'm really torn here. But I'm really concerned from a fiduciary standpoint on, on how to handle the financial burden that we could face by entering into a rental, rental issue of rent control or rent stabilization, they call it. Am I right there? I think I'm right.
I think, I think you're right, Councilmember Cordaro. The concerns of the city for the past two iterations, so for the past 20 years, defending rent control ordinance was viewed to be a risk to the city and as was the need to, or the cost associated with providing the infrastructure within the city to be able to implement such an ordinance and to defend it. We know from other jurisdictions, you know, that, you know, the cost to operate this type of a program could run into the approximately $2 million a year range, which is what Santa Barbara concluded when they were studying this. And that's similar to jurisdictions elsewhere in the state of California.
I don't mind sharing with you that that's a bit difficult for some of us to understand and all we're trying to do here is to control the rent that can be charged to people that are having trouble with the amount of money that it costs to do certain things. I'm not saying that the park is charging too much or anything else is happening, but what I am saying is that when, when these people come up to the podium over there and say, hey, you know, my, my rent went up $50 and my pay went up $40 and in today's environment, inflation is going up $200. So I think it puts our people in a difficult situation, but it puts us in a difficult situation to, to expose the city to perhaps millions of dollars on an annual basis. So it's a very, very complex and difficult decision to have to make for all, for all five of us. Thank you for your report. I don't have anything else, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions from the council?
I just have a comment. As we, you know, as we continue on and we go in and we hear public comment, it comes down to this, in my opinion, is that we're supposed to be sitting up here telling a private business owner who has invested generations of money and everything else to create a living space, a good living space for people. And then we're supposed to say, well, we're going to tell you how to run your own business. We're going to tell you, you have to charge this much, this much rent, that much rent. I always keep on going back to when everybody signs a lease, nobody's holding a gun to their head. It's, they understand what they're signing and they need to understand what part of the economy works with what they're doing. And I just, I'm just not in the business, in my opinion, to be able to tell a private business owner what he can and can't do with his property. If you're not living in a mobile home park, you're going to be living in an apartment or a condo, just like what the professor said earlier. You're going to face the same things. You're going to have increases. Usually, nothing does get decreased, unfortunately, but one thing I asked him was government assistance, and there is government assistance for those that can't afford their rents. And I, and I think that's something that the mobile homeowners need to research with their tenants because what Mr. Rupert said, which really, which really grabbed me, he says, this is such a great lease because you put the tenants and landlords together to help them hash out what they want to do. I'm looking at a letter right here from the Casa Grande HOA and they're telling, they're saying that they're 100% support of not implementing a state, a Santa Maria mobile home park rent control ordinance or rent stabilization ordinance. They, they want to be able to choose what they want to choose without government coming down on their back. Government just has to be taken out of private business at times. I just...
Any other, any other questions here from the council?
One more, Madam Mayor. I promised to try to end it here. Something that Councilwoman Waterfield said reminded me that my own personal philosophy is that the less government we have involved in our lives, that the better off we are. I don't believe that it's the government's position, and this is what we would be doing. We would be making a law that says, you can't do this or you must do that. And, and there's, there's times when, when, when we need to step aside and we need to let the market establish the market. And I would, I would want to agree with Ms. Waterfield in her assessment, but a huge part of me wants to help these people that have been coming to this meeting for years and most cordially mentioning their, their problems, their needs, their desires. And, you know, I'm not so sure that I was, I've been able to find an answer for that question, but we should not be in people's lives when we don't have to be.
Thank you.
That's just my personal feeling.
Madam Clerk, do we, I know we have requests to speak, so how many do we have right now?
Madam Mayor, we have a total of about probably 26 requests to speak, some online who I don't see a raise their hands, but they have registered. And then we have about 20 in-house. I do... I do have to make a report on the number of comments received, if you don't mind, Madam Mayor.
Written comments, great.
Yes. Staffs received written comments from Gary Hall, Bruce Stanton, Carol Brinkman, Jaime Rodriguez, S.B. Can, Esther Reynoso, Anne Hernandez, Andrea Mayfield, Peggy Brierton, David Dennis, Kathy Sharam, and because we have received so many, an additional 20 others, who I did not get their names written down, but have provided counsel with correspondence, who are in favor of a rent stabilization ordinance. Jared Gonzalez, Paul Kirk, Max Zappas, David Gray, and Lisa Tok all wrote in opposition to the rent stabilization ordinance, and the correspondence has been posted on the city's website with the agenda item and was provided to counsel via email along with a copy of the dais tonight. So as I mentioned, I have 20 speakers in-house, and at least I know one has their raised hand. Actually, now we have more than that. We have at least three who have raised their hand online. Madam Mayor, what would you like me to set the timer for this evening?
You know what? I'm going to take the ones that came, that took the time to come here tonight. I'm going to take them first. If someone can do it in one minute, I will let them go first.
Okay.
If I have those, then we can get some of those out of the way, and maybe someone then does a two-minute and...
Okay. I will hand you the stack, and then I will let you... Or do you want me to read these off?
Well, no, I don't want you to... Here, I'll take that. I just, I want the one-minuters that would like to...
Come up and speak.
Come up and speak. They can do this in one minute, and some of you may not be so inclined to do so. And let's see how many takers we get. I hate to tell people they can't... I know you come, I've done this before. I come prepared to speak for three minutes, and they tell me I only have one minute to speak, and you've got to cross out stuff. So anyone that wants to come up and speak and has one minute to say it, you may come up and get in line. Please give your name. Good evening. My name is...
We know each other.
I know.
Hi, guys. My name is Andrea Mayfield. I live in Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates. I've been there for 15 years, and I've been with y'all for maybe three. I have a very quick comment to make. Number one, I want you to remember that we're dealing with mobile homes. We're not dealing with apartments. That's apples and oranges. You can't compare rentals in apartments with rentals in a mobile home. The other thing that comes to me is the Reverend Martin Luther King said, where there is injustice anywhere, there is injustice everywhere. We have a bunch of parks and a bunch of mobile home residents that are not a part of this system. We need to get those people covered. All mobile home park residents need to have protection, and protection against higher rents that aren't necessary. And right now, I mean, the mobile home residence ordinance really is a situation that takes into consideration park owners.
Thank you, Ms. Mayfield.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Just give your name, and then our clerk will sort this out, hopefully.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the time. Appreciate it. My name is Philip Tabianen, and I'm from Plus Property Management. We operate in Arroyo Grande and also here in Santa Maria, and Lompoc, and then also in Solvang, San Ynez Valley. And from a personal perspective, I was born and raised in San Barbara County, so there is a great pride that I have to live here, and with that comes issues with housing. And so I've been a renter before, and I've been an owner before, so I understand the complexities, and I understand, I can sympathize. Rather than listing all, and repeating all the reasons that Mr. Rupert listed, and it's been an agenda item before, I'm sure you've heard them, all the items opposing rent stabilization, I'd like to just say, you know, essentially, there has to be a better way to go about this. There has to be a better way to apply time and resources.
Okay, thank you. Any more one-minuters?
Good afternoon, council.
Good evening.
My name is Monta Garcia, and I'm an organizer with Cause. I'm here today in support of the mobile home rent stabilization. As many have already stated, the current mobile lease is not working in protecting our Santa Maria residents. It is really flawed. I'd just like to shine some light on the kind of folks that this specific issue is affecting. As an organizer, I directly connect with a multitude of community members from a variety of backgrounds. I've noticed, I'm sure as you have as well, a huge, large portion of mobile home residents are retired elders and farm laborers. Here today, you have the opportunity to support some of the most vulnerable residents of your community. Mobile home rent stabilization is doable and very crucial, but I'll leave you with this. What happens when the mobile home residents can't pay their rent? Do they apply for Section 8, which, in my understanding, has a three- to five-year waitlist? Do they apply for rent stamps? This mobile home rent stability issue can very quickly become a homelessness issue for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you got that time great.
My name is Janee Bowen. Just a couple of quick comments. The only thing that I'm, I just feel frustrated, I guess, because I've lived in mobile home park now for two years, and I've seen so many of these seniors and so many of these veterans, and I just feel really bad for these people that they're dealing with these things. It seems frustrating that San Luis Obispo County, San Luis Obispo City, and San Barbara City has the rent stabilization, and we don't have it. We're much more of a poorer community to me, so it just, that doesn't make sense. The other thing that I just, you know, that really is frustrating is it seems like, by some of the things that were said here today, it seems like basically the people that are not involved in this, because it's not enforced, they're just kind of out of luck. They're just kind of screwed, I guess. And they're told that basically, oh, if we do do this, then you may be out on the street. So it is like almost a scare tactic to me, and I just don't, that just doesn't seem right. That just doesn't, none of this seems right.
Thank you. Thank you. Janie, what was your last name again?
Catherine.
Bowen, okay. Good evening.
Good evening, council. I'm Frank Thompson from Rancho Buena Vista, here again in support of rent stabilization. I don't detour that the park owners have, they're there for business. They're there to make money. That's what they're there for. But to me, somewhere along the way, there has to be a little more understanding of cost and how much rent goes up. My rent when I first moved into that park was a quarter of my income. Now it's a half of my income. Somewhere, I feel that there has to be a slowdown or a stop to the amount of rent that is increased every year, because eventually, it's going to be more than half, and next is going to be three-quarters of my income. And so I just feel like somewhere, it has to come to a stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so any of you would like to do two minutes? Just come on up. Just give your name.
Peggy Brierton. I'm going to try to make it two minutes. So there is no stability and only certainty we have, as our space rents are becoming unaffordable. So it was supposed to have to the benefit of the residents to create stability and certainty, so you flunked on that one. Other parks may have benefited from the model lease, but, you know, rewriting their lease, but Casa del Rio was not able to do so because of the timing of our lease. It was due December 31, 2019, and the residents received the copy of the model lease in February of the new year, so it made no difference at all in their dialogue, their discussions. This is an important element. Enforcement of the model lease should not be dependent on park residents finding breaches before staff steps in to correct, and they did step in, thank you. We moved to Casa del Rio in August of 2020, one of the six mobile homes that signed up. We did not receive a copy of the model lease, so we signed the only lease we knew of. That included a 10% vacancy cost increase. Since we discovered on December of '21 of the error, new residents have, we have all received now a copy of the model lease. The difference is, when we received it in mid-March, okay, it didn't say that we were all, we could choose it. We signed the lease that said across the top that we could not sign another lease or rent stabilization or anything else. We were not entitled to it by signing the lease that we signed. We thought that was binding. We thought, well, we got the sample of the model lease now legally and mail, but we can't use it. I'm skipping some things that will have you in the written there for you, but I want to address the idea about apartments and condos. Park owners benefit from a stable rent source, as property owners are not likely to move from mobile homes. We have an investment.
Thank you, Ms. Brierton.
Please, please, just one statement.
You know what? If I do that for you, then I have to do it for everybody. I ask if they could come up for two minutes. Thank you very much.
You probably remember me. I'm Jackie Jones.
Hi, Jackie.
My remarks will be very brief. I know you were concerned about the property owners. Well, when they bought the property, they wanted to make some money on it, and they divided it up. We've paid lease, but we also pay property taxes, which covers the property owners. So we're not only paying rent, we're paying property taxes. Please remember that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jackie Jones. So how many do I have left now?
Good evening. I'll try to be quick. My name's Peter Lau. I'm with Less Frame Management. I'm here to represent a couple of mobile home parks. I'm with the management company, not an attorney. Trailer Rancho Mobile Home Park was built in the '70s. We started managing it, the company started managing it in 1976, 100-space park. La Maria was built in the '70s as well, 158 spaces. We've been managing it since 2013. Our increases, I'm just going to read down the list, for both parks have been CPI increases at the time of the lease signing. For La Maria, the increases annually from 2013 through 2021 were as follows: 1.3%, 2.0%, 1.4%, 1.2%, 2.5%, 3.9%, 3.3%, 1.9%, and 3.9%. And that's for both parks. We're really proud of our communities. We have good onsite management there, and I'd like to think we're pretty transparent with our residents. We run a number of mobile home parks in rent control areas as well, and to be frank, they don't, they're not as successful. They don't end up being as well-kept as the communities we have in this city. Thank you for your guys' time.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
The young man just left here.
I live in La Maria. I moved in 2010 with my wife.
Excuse me, can you give your name, please?
Lauren Cochran.
Lauren Cochran, okay.
I moved in 2013, I mean, '10 with my wife, and 2013, when I think when it was sold, they had a big meeting at the main office there, and they put on us the tax on the place, the sales tax they had to pay, and they said it's one-time, only thing. And my wife, she said, my God, this is $60. She said, we could pay $60. But what happened? They put it on our rent, and we asked, well, that's going to go down? And she said, no, it's going to stay there. So we've been paying $60 every day, excuse my language, every month on that there of taxes. And one thing about it, they did something that I've been, for a long time, they come in there this year, or this last year, put new blacktop down where it really needed. They did a heck of a job. And besides that, the young couple that managed that over there, they're fantastic. They're really good kids. But overall, the increase, not so much, it's just that when they said it's one-time, only on the taxes, it wasn't. Every month, we pay that $60, pay that $60, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Cochran. Thank you, Mr. Cochran. Okay, Madam Clerk, how many do we have left now? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Sure.
Michelle Moth, Casa del Rio Mobile Home Park. What we're asking for is to help to protect mobile home affordability. Renegotiate the model lease. If this doesn't happen, affordable housing in Santa Maria will decrease drastically, as the majority of residents in the parks are seniors on fixed incomes and low-income families. The professor was talking about economy and everything like that. Well, if the rents increase and we have to cut back and cut back and cut back, we're not going to be spending money in town. It's, you know, it's kind of a, it's a bad situation. It's bad for everybody all the way around. It'd be bad for the city, and it would definitely be bad for the residents of those parks. Thank you.
Thank you.
We still have about 16 here. I think that we had some individuals who were speaking that we didn't...
That didn't have slips for, okay. So maybe my idea wasn't all that great.
We tried.
Huh? Let's, I'll give them three. Bruce Stanton? What? Three. Good evening, Mr. Stanton.
Good evening, Mayor Patino. Councilmembers, I'm Bruce Stanton, here speaking tonight on behalf of the residents of the North Santa Barbara County Manufactured Homeowner Team, and it's a pleasure to speak to you tonight. Since 1986, I've specialized in mobile home law, and a lot of my work has been in connection with the negotiation or drafting of mobile home rent stabilization ordinances throughout California, the cases in federal and state court involving those ordinances, and also something I'll talk more about at the end, which is memorandums of understanding, or MOUs, which are alternatives to ordinances. I addressed you last December during public comment and have submitted two letters to you that I don't want to go through all again, but with respect to, in all due respect to the professor who spoke, there are articles out there about mobile home rent issues. There are very detailed articles. Over 100 California cities and counties have enacted some form of regulation because, Councilman Cordiero, this is not a market. It's not a free market. Mobile home residents are captive, and when rents rise, they have no options. They can't just pick up the home and move it. A state study by California Department of Housing found that only 3% of mobile homes are ever moved, once they're sighted until their eventual death, if you will. The problem here, which I think, let me address a couple more quick things. The issue of a lack of maintenance, that, the information or the evidence shows that doesn't happen. San Jose has 64 mobile home parks with rent stabilizations since 1986. There's never been maintenance issues in those parks. And there's a law that AB 2782 passed into law effective 1/1/2020 that requires, under the government code, that a park owner cannot close the park without giving compensation to the residents, fair market value buyout of their homes in place. So that's simply not something for you to say, gosh, the parks could close. But let me, because time is fleeting here, the MOU alternative I wanted to talk about in the city of Sunnyvale, we spent about 10 months in a city with 13 parks and 1,300 spaces to achieve this agreement where the city was a party. It governs rent adjustments, annual adjustments, resale, pass-throughs, resale increases. The city hired a consultant to broker all the conversations with all the stakeholders. It's enforceable, unlike this, because we dealt with issues like, how are we going to get it out there? How about outreach? How about Spanish translation? How about Spanish translation? Making sure people understand the option and understand what's happening. And if the parks didn't sign, they faced the alternative of a possible ordinance. And I'm happy to say, we got unanimous park owner participation. They all signed. And so it can work as a very useful alternative, if you would consider that. Let's audit this program and figure out what's been going wrong with it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stanton.
Thank you.
Michael Holliday, followed by Amy Coats.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Michael Holliday. I'm a retired professional and a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Home Park. I want to address the projected cost of an ordinance that's been referred to here this evening as a $200,000 startup cost. I just point out that this represents less than 1% or 0.82% of the city's reported $244 million budget. So we need to put some context around these costs. Comparing the city's population of 105,000 to the annual expenditure budget, that averages amount to about $2,324 per resident in the city. And if we assume that there's 2,300 residents in our 15 or 14 mobile home parks, which have about 1,556 spaces of one and a half residents per space, the estimated cost of the $200,000 would create an $87 per mobile home resident cost to the city. So this is only then 3.74% of the per-person budgeted amount of $2,324. So the question I have is, is it worth spending 0.82% of your total budget and $87 per mobile home resident to protect their homes? I noticed the budget also contains, by way of comparison, $360,000 to remodel a city Also, a budget of $50,000 to remodel the city manager's office. $225,000 for minimi locker room remodel. And finally, $150,000 for graffiti removal. So where does protecting affordable housing fit into these priority of items? How much of that $360,000 to remodel the city attorney's office would go a long ways to protecting mobile home residents? Which is more important? That's up to you to decide. But that puts some context around these numbers that we hear tossed about. Enacting legislation typically does cost money. Protecting seniors, immigrants, on those on fixed incomes should not be rejected due to financial considerations unless they're exorbitant. And I think the numbers I've just presented here to you today don't suggest that they're at all exorbitant. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Amy Coats, followed by Eric Wells.
Hi.
Good evening.
I can only tell you what my story is. So me and my mother have been here for 11 years. For the first 10 years that we were in our mobile home park, the owners were very good to us. They kept the space rent affordable for us. Within the last year, a new company has bought out our mobile home park, a company that owns 33 other mobile home communities in several states. And within that year, less than a year, the new company has raised our rent for us and our neighbors by $50 three separate times every 90 months, I mean, 90 days, sorry, every 90 days as they are legally allowed to. So it's my personal theory that nothing's going to stop them from wanting to make it unaffordable for us to be able to stay there. And they will buy us out if they want to, if they want to develop it. That's, I don't think, a lease or rent stabilization will necessarily do that for Oregon, so it's a moot point. I did try to contact the CRLA for assistance. The lease that they, the new owners had offered us was standard. It did mention the 90 days they could raise the rent. And it turns out that the only thing that the CRLA knew about was the rent stabilization program in Santa Barbara City, which doesn't affect us. There is no Section 8 for mobile homeowners, because we own our mobile homes. So we don't qualify for that. So if there was an enforceable way to make it so that your increases were still reasonable, I would be happy with that, but I won't be able to, if it continues to keep going up in that same amount of time, in that same way, I won't be able to be, live here. I won't be able to work at Cal Poly anymore after nine years of being there. So just keep that in mind. If we can't, if the working class cannot live here, so who will do that work?
Eric Wells, followed by Mike Judge.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
My name is Eric Wells. I represent the owners of Casa del Rio Mobile Estates. And it's one of the three biggest parks in Santa Maria. And we opened in 1974, and we owned 234 spaces. And 232 residents have signed our long-term lease. One has a short-term lease, and one is on the model lease. And we did get a complaint from the city regarding one of our new residents not being offered the model lease. That was an administrative error. We apologize. As soon as we found out about the error, we did offer that resident the model lease. There was a few residents that hadn't received it. And the one that complained actually signed our lease, not the model lease, and one of the other ones signed the model lease. But I believe when we did our signing of our rents, we hadn't received the model lease yet. I believe that's accurate. So we gave them what we had, and then as soon as we were able to get it and corroborate it, we sent it out to our tenants, and I believe they received information saying they could choose one or the other. So that's what our record shows, and we can verify that later if you guys want any documentation. We also, in the last 10-year period between 2010 and 2019, we made over a million and a half, I think a million 558 to be exact, in rent concessions, because we've always respected our tenants and have tried to pass a reasonable amount. We haven't passed all our capital expenditures, less than half on multiple occasions, because we know it's expensive. Another time, we actually, when Social Security didn't go up, we actually cut our rent to accommodate that. So we've done everything we can, because we realize when people can't afford our rent, we don't, we can't run the park. So we are willing to work with you guys, and we just want our residents to know that we've always been in support of supporting them. And we don't believe that the rent control ordinance would actually accomplish what many of the residents think it will. And we'd be happy to provide any information to support our opinion. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Mike Judge, followed by Gary Hall, followed by Barry McGee.
Mayor Patino and city council members, my name is Mike Judge. I operate and am, have an ownership in Casa Grande Mobile Home Park. We're the park that actually has the 420 spaces that was spoken about a little bit earlier. And the park was built in 1979. Casa Grande has received no complaints of any type through the city. Our average rent increase from 2010 through the 1 January of 2022 has been 3.07%. Rancho, we're slightly lower than Rancho Buena Vista, which has some common ownership. The reason we're a little bit lower is we go by the, what is it, LA Long Beach Metro City Index. Their tenants, Rancho Buena Vista, requested to be the Western Cities, which is a smaller city index. Turns out, they thought it was going to be a lower index. It turns out it actually had a 4.6% last year, I'm sorry, 5.6. Just make sure, they had 5.6. Casa Grande only had a 4%. So their average is slightly higher, and they'll tell you what theirs is shortly. When we look at an average rent of an increase of about 3%, we don't really see that as really being unreasonable, rent increases. We have provided documentations that shows you our rent increases year by year, so it's inside there. The residence group has basically said, if they can't afford the house, they're basically out. The attorney said that they can't remove the house, the one that spoke a few times ago. He's actually correct. Most people don't remove the houses. They sell the houses. If you look at Casa Grande over from 2019 till now, they've actually experienced an increase in value of 73.45% in their homes. If they sell their homes, they get the cash. Park doesn't get anything. That's their house, they sell it. They can do whatever they want. They could go move into apartment, I'm not saying that's what they should do. But it's not like they lose the house. It's their house, they sell it. They don't move it, they sell it. Let me see if I'm missing anything here. Okay. On top of the increase in value, the average home in Casa Grande only takes 33 days to sell. So if you need the cash and you want to sell it, it sells very quickly. Again, given these facts, we don't really see why rent control would even be considered when we've averaged 3% for this period of time. We believe the 3% is low, and this was actually negotiated through the model lease. And that's part of the reason it's been low. We haven't had up and downs, and it's been very stable for that whole period of time.
Thank you, Mr. Judge.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Yeah, you know me, Gary Hall, Rancho Buena Vista. I have, as I usually do, prepared my remarks. I was thrown back a little bit by the surprise guest of a professor from the university who clearly spoke to anti-renter protection issues, and I thought that was totally unfair. What I have prepared to speak to tonight is the fact that it's time for mandatory and enforceable manufactured home rent stabilization in Santa Maria. That's the title of the status report that I submitted to you. You should be in your packets. I hope you had a chance to read it. It provides the facts of what's transpired over the last 20 years. The one error that is in that report is as follows. Number four on page seven should have read, in parentheses, "It was recently disclosed that Casa del Rio, a manufactured mobile home park that signed the agreement in November 2019, did not distribute the EML 2020 option to existing residents until February 2020, well after most residents have already renewed their 10-year lease. New residents, that's since February 2020, were not informed of the EML 2020 option until March this year, 2022, two years." I apologize for that error that I made in the report. "The November 2019 EML 2020 enforcement agreement approved by the council then, while formal, remains voluntary and unenforceable. The time invested by your staff, as well as that of the stakeholders, produced documents that did little, very little, to provide meaningful and enforceable rent stabilization. It is again time for this council to initiate the completion of that unfinished task. Please direct staff to open new discussions, which include mobile homeowners as stakeholders, to either, one, fix and renegotiate the failed model lease, or, two, further develop our proposed mobile home rent stabilization ordinance, or, three, introduce and develop a new mutually acceptable alternative, like an MOU agreement, where all park owners participate and all residents benefit. We, mobile home residents of Santa Maria, are looking to you to initiate discussions which will result in fair, beneficial, mandatory, and enforceable mobile home rent stabilization. We need and deserve your help to protect mobile home space affordability." Thank you.
Mr. McGee, followed by Christina Coleman.
Good evening, Mayor Patino, and city council members and staff. My name's Barry McGee. My family and I built and own two of the largest parks in Santa Maria, Rancho Buena Vista and Casa Grande. Rancho Buena Vista opened in 1988, and it has 209 spaces. 193 of Rancho Buena Vista's residents are on the park long-term lease, 11 are on the park short-term lease, and five are on the model lease. Rancho Buena Vista has not received any complaint from the city regarding violations of enforcement agreement or model lease. The average rent increase for Rancho Buena Vista since 2010 is 3.27%. I actually went back and studied from the opening of the park, and lo and behold, it's that exact number since 1988 through today. I would call that stable, as far as increases go. Mike earlier explained, Mike Judge, regarding, there's a slight higher difference in that rent over the 10-year period than Casa Grande's because of the difference in the indexes. And if you remember, we wanted to stick with the metro index, but the resident groups insisted to change to the other index. I just don't think that sounds unreasonable over the time period that's involved here. And I know they want to say you can't compare apartments, but it's an alternative form of housing. And when I look at it, if you go from 2019 to today, apartments have averaged 9.5% compared to our parks at 3.25%. I just, I don't think that is an unreasonable situation. And documentation has been provided prior to the meeting for you guys for all of this. The other thing I want to talk about is the property values, or the mobile home values. Since 2019, and we did the model lease, in Rancho Buena Vista, home values have increased by 69%. And the average time on market for sale is 13 days. I mean, wow. If you need to get out, you have to sell. It doesn't seem to be a difficult situation in Rancho Buena Vista. Given these facts, I just don't see any need or reason for you to even consider a rent control ordinance. Thank you for listening. If you have anything or any questions, I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Christina Coleman, followed by Peter Lau. Oh, he did? Okay. Yeah, I'm not going to let you talk again. Okay. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Hi, I'm Christina Coleman, and I live in Casa de Gran, Casa del Rio. I always say that. I moved here five years ago exactly, and the rent was 770. Now it's 920. That's a big increase. And when we were to sign our lease agreement for 10 years, we were basically, and I talked to Gary Hall about this, if we didn't sign it and we went month to month, then it could be raised however the owner, however much they wanted to. So, and I wouldn't be able to live here if I didn't own my...
Ms. Coleman, can you speak into the microphone, please?
I wouldn't be able to live here if I didn't own my home. And I was blessed to have an inheritance when my parents went to heaven. Anyway, I didn't know that, I found out subsequent to, or I would not have bought in the city, that, I mean, yeah, because the county, I think I'm correct, the county does not, does have rent control. So we have people, I've talked to some other people since then... So we have people, I've talked to some other people since then, and they go, oh, well, we have rent control. So that's, that's what I wanted to say. And, let's see. I'm privileged to live here. I could not afford anything else, and I have a manufactured home. I have a lawn and everything. So I do not want to be forced to move. And when they say the homes are going up, everything's going up. So you have to take that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Garcia, followed by Eileen Armijo.
Good evening. Let me unlock my phone. I'm sorry, but thank you for your time. My name is Rebecca. I'm a policy advocate with CAWS. And for the, for the most vulnerable people in our community, as we keep hearing, many of them are retired seniors or retired farm laborers. The best housing option for a long time has been mobile homes. But now even the cost of living at mobile home parks only gets higher and higher. After advocates, like many of the people here, have attended countless meetings, to whom I'm really grateful, we're finally having this overdue discussion. Yet even in the staff report, in the professor that was invited to speak, yeah, there's the very biased direction to how we're having this conversation, right? And it's all being directed back to this mobile home model lease, which is voluntary and leaves out most mobile home residents, which excludes them from any sort of protection. Right now, there are about 3,000 people residing in mobile homes, and every one of them deserves to be protected. Santa Maria needs to move forward with something mandatory and enforceable to make sure that all mobile homes are included. I also, I mean, I just wanted to speak to some of the comments from people representing mobile homes here today. It sounds like we're on the same page. You have no issue protecting the residents, and your rent hasn't been increasing at an extreme rate, which means, yeah, I don't think you'd have a problem with the ordinance. If anything, we need to work together and make sure that all of mobile homes, all the people living there actually have those protections and can continue to live here. I really appreciated someone who, I don't remember who, yeah, highlighted that the people living in these homes often are the workers who can't afford to live in other places. And if we can't accommodate those people, I mean, it just says a lot about our city. So, yeah, I hope that you actually listen to the people who are here today. And if not, I hope that when you go back to your homes, you can sit with us. Thank you.
Eileen Armijo, followed by Esther Jansen.
Okay, I'm back again, and I am unprepared.
Good evening, Eileen.
Good evening, Alice. We're representing people who buy a mobile home. They are not renting an apartment. They own, and it's their last, usually in senior parks, their last investment. The model lease did not address part of this because it's strictly voluntary, and it's up to the owner of the park to choose to sign on or not. So if the owner signs, does not sign on, like our mobile home park, then you don't get any of the benefits of the model lease. You're left out in the cold. There are a lot of things that aren't the owner's fault, but there are things that are happening. The biggest thing in our park, I think, that I noticed, is a vacancy clause. At the discretion of the owners, it's in the lease, they can raise the rent 10% every time it sells, which causes the value of your mobile home to go down. I, as the second owner in ours, and my rent is 780 a month. I know other people who live in my park, and if they're the fifth owner of the mobile home, their rent is 900 to 1,000 a month. How do people who are retired, this is a senior park, you know? You can invest, you know, what was the saying? People who live in mobile homes depend on reasonable laws to prevent their home from becoming unaffordable through no fault of their own. Many RSOs or MOUs can include fair rate of return provisions to guarantee that the owners and the operators in mobile home parks will have a fair return on their investment. That's only fair. A well-written one can give fairness to everybody. And don't we need, a working community like Santa Maria needs a fair place for people to reside. The home prices are high. The apartments are high, and they have an investment. And it's not like they don't have to keep up their home. Nobody comes into their apartment, their home, and makes sure the yard's all kept. That's your responsibility because you're leasing the land. So why not give them a little bit of protection? Why not create a community that embraces everybody? The park owners have a right, but so do the people living there. And I look at these people every day, and I, your heart just breaks at some of them. And, you know, they didn't plan on this. And when parks get sold, you don't know who buys them. I guess there was private owners before I moved in. The last owner is an LLC. They're a corporation of doctors. And it doesn't make them bad. It just means that they bought it for profit. I mean, that's what corporations do. Nothing wrong, but it, there needs to be some protection.
Thank you. Esther Jansen, followed by William Heinz.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's generally known in the industry that when a rent control ordinance is adopted, the quality of the park suffers because the return on the investment is curtailed. This assertion generally claimed by park owners intimidates homeowners and government decision-makers such as city council members. However, it's not based on fact. I think of just going down College Avenue and seeing across the street from the city, there's a park. It's called Quayle Meadows East. It's been under the county's rent control ordinance, adopted 40 years ago in 1979. So I'm asking the council, please, base your decision on facts and evidence, not on intimidation by unproved claims. We ask you to take the necessary action tonight and direct staff to open new discussions, which includes mobile home owners as stakeholders to consider either a mobile home RSO or an MOU agreement in which all park owners would either participate or else be subject to an RSO. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. William Heinz filed, followed by Lisa Toak.
Thank you to all the city council members, Madam Mayor, and the city manager to bring this item on the agenda for this evening. My name is William Heinz, and I'm a resident of Casa Grande. I've been there for 19 years. There was a question that was brought before the council before. I think if you look in the City Code, Chapter 12, 9, that talks about closure conversion ordinances, and it also talks about change of use of a particular thing, whatever comes about in an ordinance or MOU. That has to be considered as part of that. The resolution that was passed and adopted by the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Santa Maria on November 19, 2019, authorizing the mayor to execute the enforcement agreement for model lease 2020 in the mobile home park owners. Also contained in that document indicates the park owners does not enter into an agreement in consideration of implementing a rent control ordinance. It appears that numerous park owners have not complied with the general terms of this resolution. The actual document, the Resolution of City Council of Santa Maria, California, authorizing the mayor to execute the enforcement agreements for the model lease 2020 with mobile park owners, of which Mayor Patino signed out, was not provided for this agenda item, only references. The other important document that was not provided was the Agreement for the Enforcement of the Model Lease. Enclosed in that document, city obligations, recitals, general terms, conditions, services to be performed, city duties, exhibits, remedies for breach, miscellaneous notices, compliance in the law, integration, interpretation, jurisdiction, warranty, authority, and no waiver severability, again, signed by Mayor Patino. Based on the city council's agenda report, only six mobile home parks have signed on. There are 14 mobile home parks in the city of Santa Maria, which indicates less than 50% have signed on to the agreement. If so, based on that resolution, the city should have taken steps to correct that issue. The enforcement of model lease lacks enforcement, even in parks where park owners sign. The staff actually read to provide backstop agreements, to provide residents with a lease available to point. Unfortunately, the backstop agreement was flawed and incomplete. Therefore, even the parks who signed, the protection of mobile home owners, provided at the end of the agreement term, park declines if they extended the agreement. Furthermore, under a signed agreement, no protections for the homeowners provided a new park owner declines to sign the agreement, and there is no incentive for a new assigner to sign it. With these and flaws, the current signed agreement does not provide enforceable rent stabilization. Please take action tonight, directing the staff to either have a rent stabilization or a memorandum of understanding. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Heinz. Lisa Toak.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Toak. I represent Rancho Buena Vista. Sorry? Are we stopping? Oh, sorry. I represent Rancho Buena Vista, Casa Grande, and Casa del Rio. Many of the stories that the council has been hearing about this issue have been, we believe, incorrect, and we have attempted to offer facts tonight that tell the true story. Not many residents have chosen to enter into the model lease, which isn't surprising, given that there is a long history of park leases in Santa Maria, and that the model lease was intended, as has been referenced tonight, to be a backstop for those residents who did not wish to enter into a park lease. My clients' rent increases are far less than you've been led to believe, an average of around 3% per year since 2010. You've heard stories about rents being increased by larger percentages when homes sell. Interestingly, both the model lease and a number of the park leases provide that those increases cannot be implemented more frequently, as the Assistant City Manager mentioned, than every five years. And as a result of the fact that the model lease and the park leases include those provisions, approximately 80% of the residents in Santa Maria are entitled to that protection. When a prospective resident is considering buying a home, that resident is told what the rent on the home will be, and that resident can always choose not to buy the home. Also, some residents have to make the difficult decision to sell their mobile homes when they discover that they can no longer afford them. You've also heard stories about the residence group not being represented by attorneys back in 2019. Yet one of them is here tonight, and it's my understanding that the residence group consulted with that same attorney back in 2019, in addition to another attorney who's not here tonight. You've heard stories about unnamed residents not being offered the model lease, yet the city has, as you've heard, only received one complaint to date having to do with the model lease or the enforcement agreement. Although the parks have demonstrated that their rent increases have been reasonable by any measure, we understand that there are residents who are suffering. And my clients and other parks have, I believe, been willing to help those residents. In addition, when my clients and other parks got into the business of providing housing, they did not agree to remedy the financial struggles that the residents are experiencing, that they did not cause. My clients did not cause those problems. They're sorry for them, but they did not cause them. As detailed in documents provided by the WMA, rent control ordinances are very expensive. As detailed in documents provided by the WMA and the Home Builders Association, we believe rent control ordinances don't work. And so if the city council were to implement a rent control ordinance, we believe it would be a negative trifecta of unnecessary, expensive, and ineffective. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you want to, do you want to just call them? Yes, you just call them out.
Madam Mayor, there appears to be three other speakers on Zoom who have their hands raised. First being Sarah McDonald, followed by Alma Hernandez. I'm going to set the timer for three minutes as well. Sarah, are you able to speak? Ms. McDonald?
Can you hear me now?
Okay, yes, we can.
Okay. Sorry I was late, people. Busy with the Poor People's Campaign, getting ready to Washington DC, and fight for impacted people. Our home, mobile home owners, the people who live in residence, who live there, are impacted people. They don't have the incomes like a lot of people do. So every penny that they are assessed to pay more rent can stop them from being able to eat well, be able to not only eat well, live well, can make them have to decide what kind of medication, if any, are they going to take each day. You know, we have to protect our ancestors and our elders. Our elders are what makes this country great. And they need to be protected. And so rent stabilization is where, it may not be the ideal thing, but it's, we've got to do something. And, you know, it's, when you hear stories, they're not stories. They're lived experiences. They're testifying to their truth, and their truth may be hard for you, for us to hear. It's not as hard for me because I'm an impacted person as well, who has an Obama phone, gets SinCal, and gets a, gets nap every month. But, you know, having to live within that kind of a means when things keep going up and up and up is not ideal. So we all need to come together and decide what's best for our youth and for our elderly, and know that, you know, it's everybody in, nobody out. And you know what? As a part of the Poor People's Campaign, we always say, when we live from the bottom, everybody rises. So let's, let's live from the bottom and have everybody rise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. The next one we have is Alma Hernandez.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, ma'am.
Dear Madam Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to share my support of adopting mandatory and enforceable manufactured home space rent stabilization in Santa Maria. I've witnessed for years, mobile home owners, many who are already in fixed income, end up homeless because there's no stabilization on the rent that they must pay. The reasons for adopting space rent stabilization are many, but the ones I want to highlight include: One, we have an affordable housing crisis in California, in Santa Maria. Mobile homes provide an affordable home to so many families, veterans, and seniors. Two, rent stabilization assists in maximizing purchase of other needed items, clothes, food, and other commodities that keep our economy moving. Three, we are already facing a homelessness crisis. Right now is when we can take action on something the city can do to alleviate increase in our homeless counts. Fourth, I plead that you look into how long waiting lists are for Section 8 housing, not just due to the availability of vouchers, but available homes. So I ask, please enter into discussions with mobile home owners and all park owners to come up with a real solution that provides a win for both. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Madam Mayor, there were two others that raised their hand after I made the announcement, but one is a telephone number that had had their hand raised with a phone number ending 445. If you're able to speak, please unmute your telephone.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jared Gonzalez. I represent WMA, which is the Western Manufactured Housing Communities Association. WMA and its members support the current model lease agreement. I was fortunate to participate as a stakeholder in the process that resulted in the model lease agreement. After several meetings and a lot of compromise, the city helped guide both sides to agree to a collaborative solution that mean neither party completely satisfied, which usually means it was a good thing. The model lease agreement provides both residents and park owners a level of certainty that's important for residents to plan their lives and for park owners to plan for repairs and costs associated with operating the parks. Having been involved in dozens of discussions about rent control in several California jurisdictions, I can confidently say rent control is not the answer here. Park owners and residents have a history of working issues out, and the model lease allows for a fair backstop anytime an agreement on lease terms cannot be reached. The cost associated with implementing a rent control ordinance is enormous. I recently submitted two reports to the city, one of which was a staff report from the city of Pico Rivera, with a population of around 62,000, and the first year costs were estimated over $410,000. And that's a lot of taxpayer money to solve for a problem that doesn't exist. I'd also like to respond to Mr. Stanton's, Mr. Stanton who said there were over 100 jurisdictions or cities that implement rent control in the state of California. I think it's important to put into context that there are 400 G2 cities in the state of California, which means that around 300 do not have rent control. And every case that I'm aware of, mobile home rent control also includes usually a mobile home park registration fee that cities charge. And usually, 50% of those fees are and are passed through residents. That's an unintended increase for park residents, along with any annual increase. The model lease is working. There are no widespread issues. And there is no good reason to undo the hard work, the compromise, and the commitment made by residents and park owners. I urge the council to take no further action. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's it?
No, Madam Mayor, we have two more. Next one would be...
Wait, wait. Did they just now tune in?
No, they raised their hand after I made the announcement of the first three.
Well, no, but when we first started this, they tuned in afterwards?
Yes.
Okay.
So then we have no other further speakers.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll bring this item back to the council for any further discussion and/or direction. So, Ms. Escobedo.
Looking at the agenda today, it caught my attention that the 5B point is basically, item is basically a presentation to the staff about the model lease agreement and to receive comments from the audience, which has been going on for a while. At that time, council member Soto and I requested that the issue is to be brought, the ordinance, the discussion to the possible, the model home rent stabilization ordinance, the discussion and vote. In the past few weeks, I have spoken with several people who have concerns about ordinance in regards to rent control in Santa Maria. And it is important to clarify, and everybody who's watching on the very here, this is not about rent control for all the city of Santa Maria. We're talking about exclusively for mobile homes. We're talking about hundreds of vulnerable Sanitarians with moderate and low income. And listening to some of the comments, and I've been taking notes, there's a lot of talking about the huge cost of an ordinance. But by saying that, we are already assuming that there are going to be legal consequences, and there's going to be a fight between the owners of the parks and the renters. So that's a little bit concerning, and because I hear a lot about from the owners of the mobile homes, that they're willing, they're raising their price or the value of their rent, sorry, and they're doing the right thing. So I think that creating an ordinance that would protect our most vulnerable part of our population, it's not worth spending money, but we invest in affordable housing in Santa Maria. So, with that being said, I definitely would like to reiterate my support of bringing this item to be discussed in the council and be voted as well. Thank you.
Ms. Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lots of great comments tonight. You know, I have to say that some of the points that stuck with me the most were really regarding the current enforceable model lease that we have and the concerns about, what would that do with the current park owners who have already signed on to that? And would that be a breach on our end with them? And the way that I see it is that it makes it, we can also make the case that it's not necessarily being enforced because not all mobile home park residents have signed on to it. And so, if there's already a lack of enforceability because it's not mandated by the park owners, then it could be said that there wouldn't necessarily be a breach. I think that the other point that really stuck with me, and I applaud my colleagues, is really trying to think outside of the box when it comes to finding ways to support residents during a time when housing affordability becomes challenging. And so, I'm in full support of looking into the possibility of a city RAN program that provides rental assistance or rental stamps to residents. I know that we already have something like that through CityBG, and so really finding ways in which we can expand on that would be great. Or if there is a way for the city to be able to match funds that we already get from the federal government, if we get money from HUD, that is definitely something that I would be of support of. But it's also important for us to note that, aside from that, there is very limited amount of support out there for renters through other programs or government programs. And so, when it comes to, you know, what role do we have as elected officials in really that oversight, you know, with business or landlords and tenants? I understand the perception of there being a really fine line, but at the end of the day, it's really our role as elected officials to listen to the needs of our residents. And during times of need, they come to us for policy solutions that could alleviate and improve, alleviate the burden that's on to them, but also improve the quality of life. And that is a responsibility that we have as elected officials, especially when it comes to implementing good policy that not only will expand the affordable housing stock in the city, but also be able to prevent homelessness. As all of you have seen, we get numerous emails, phone calls, about the homelessness problem. I just saw one right before this meeting. And what are we doing to prevent that? Or to alleviate that? And instead of us, I mean, quite frankly, there are things that the city has done to prevent affordable housing or prevent the rehousing of homeless folks. And so, when you have an audience, such as the one that we have in front of us today, pleading to the council to put in place good policy that protects tenants and prevents homelessness, how do we not listen? It is a duty and a responsibility that we have. Now, I understand and the amount of work that has already been done by our city staff when it comes to the enforceable model lease that was drafted and put into place and that somehow or somewhat has been implemented. But I think that, as to the point that Ms. Waterfield made with the earlier proposal that we were looking, the Starbucks project, there's always room for the council to go back and look at policies that we have passed and see if there's area for improvement, especially if we're hearing concern from residents that what we've already passed isn't working. And so, the fact that for the last several months, almost half of the year, we've seen a number of residents coming before us telling us that this isn't working, I think it's our due diligence. I understand not wanting to pass a rent stabilization out of hastiness, or not hastiness, but out of something that's so rushed. But I definitely do believe that it's worth us exploring to see what could be improved, what can be improved. And maybe here, the opportunity that we have as a council is directing staff to do just that. Take a look at the enforceable model lease in a more in-depth look, asking residents, ensuring that we're having facilitated, mediated conversations with mobile home park owners because we also want to ensure that their voices are heard during this time, but also the needs of the current residents that have been coming before us for over a year, telling us that what we put in place, what we passed in 2019, isn't working for them. And so, I would say that in this moment, my recommendation would be to direct staff to take a look at the enforceable model lease that we have in place, see if there's area for improvement, have more dialogue and conversation with the mobile home park residents and the owners, and see, maybe it's not a rent stabilization ordinance, but maybe it's something different that does still protect the residents in a way that they are asking.
Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've heard a lot of comments this evening. The comments that we heard from our own staff indicate that there's going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars in order to start something like this up. And I want to mention what my colleague, Mr. Escobedo, said, that we're assuming that there will be problems, and we're talking about that money. I think that the money for problems is another issue. The hundreds of thousands of dollars is going to take place, no matter what, if we get into a rent stabilization issue, because we have to hire staff in order to facilitate this type of a rent control program. Am I right, Mr. Stillwell? Okay, so it's not the potential for problems. When I mentioned earlier that if we have a problem, then we will have to fight that problem, and it will be our problem. So those are two different pots of money. If we start a rent stabilization issue, we must have people on our staff that can facilitate that rent stabilization. That money is going to have to be to hire staff. And when you hire a staff member, you're talking about many, many other things. You're talking about total, what I would refer to as total compensation. That means you got to pay their insurances and their sick time and their vacation time. And all of those things go into it, and it's much more than I can even remember. So that has nothing to do with whether or not there's a problem. A problem occurs, if a problem occurs and there's a fight that we have to defend the ordinance, that's in addition to that money that's paid at the outset for starting the program. Now, I sympathize with everybody that spoke, particularly the gentleman in the back of the room here. He spoke very eloquently with regard to his percentages and things, but no one mentioned how we're going to pay for this. And I know that you mentioned that you extrapolated out the numbers, but we deal with millions of dollars. But it's all accounted for. It's money that is accounted for, and it goes to pay for police and fire and parks and rec and all of these people. And if you had to work under the conditions and deal with these things, it's a little bit condescending to hear someone say that, "Well, you're going to remodel the city manager's office at this cost." Well, when you're dealing with those kinds of things, sometimes you have to do remodeling. You have to upgrade these things. I don't know that that's the absolute, and you're shaking your head, "No, that's no good. We're going to do this instead of that." But you're not working under those conditions. Okay, you're not working under those conditions. Well, I tell you what...
Excuse me, excuse me.
I kind of resent the idea that you're mocking me, like, with the tears, okay? That's just money issues that we have to deal with. We have to deal with them. And when you talk about it being such a terrible program, the rent model lease agreement, and we've had one bona fide complaint in two years, and that complaint is admitted by one of the park owners that that was their fault. It was an error. And they took care of it posthaste. So, I mean, do we have a problem looking for a solution? Or do we have a solution that's looking for a problem? And it's just really difficult here. I'm afraid that I can't really support something like that at this point in time for a ordinance. Now, I'm certainly not against what Ms. Soto says. I mean, that is, there is never anything that we shouldn't do in order, if we can make something better, I don't care what it is. It doesn't make any difference. And if there's some way we can make it better, then I have no problem with that. But I caution us as a body here to enter into something where we're going to own additional problems. And we don't need additional problems. Problems cost money. And money means positions. And if you were one of those positions, just one, and we said, "Well, sorry, we just happen to be all out of money." So you're out of a job. So, and I know you people don't want that. You don't want anybody to lose their job over something. No one does. But no one that spoke this evening mentioned how we're going to pay this. It was eluded. It was eluded by some of the people that when they put programs like this into effect, they assess the people. You all know what that means? That means that the cost of doing this business is given back to the residents. Am I correct, Mr. Stillwell? So if it costs us $100, then that $100 is spread out amongst the 3,000 people that talking about. And if it costs us $300,000, then that $300,000 is spread out amongst you 3,000 people. So, I mean, that's just another way of funding it. That's not saying that that's how it happens. That is a methodology by which a program like this can be funded. And I can't, my heart can't bleed enough for what's going on here. But I think you have to understand that there's a responsibility of doing good government and not spending money in a manner that it shouldn't be spent. So I'm very concerned about doing something like that. Very concerned. So, but having somebody take a look at it, like Ms. Soto, very, very properly articulated, I think that, you know, okay, I don't have any problems with that. But I could not support an ordinance that we would end up, we, the citizens of Santa Maria, the other 122,000 people that are not in this room will have to pay for. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Waterfield?
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, I heard a lot of emotion with a lot of people here. And you can't make a decision on emotion because it's going to affect so many people that have nothing to gain in regards to this. You got to go by fact. You got to go by fact. What I did here is the economy. The economy stinks all the way around. And that comes from way on top, a lot more above than where we are today. And we can't fix the economy and we can't fix a certain segment of a population that we're fighting somebody bigger that is going to keep on making it worse. There's never going to be a fix in regards to this. We went a year and a half on this model lease. We all sat down. We had Mr. Hall in there and we discussed and discussed and discussed. And we walked away with a model lease agreement. A year later, you had your lawyer there, you had representation, and it was something that we completely agreed on. We sat at the same table. I am afraid that with going on and trying to figure out, continue to figure out more, it'll never be satisfied ever. We don't need government intrusion into a private matter at all. Government's the problem. So many people rely on government and that's the problem. We can't fix that. We talk about condos and we talk about apartments and we talk about mobile homes. You're right, they're not apples to oranges. Because when you walk away from a condo and you walk away from an apartment, you don't have equity. But you can sell and have equity. Equity has been increased by 73% very few days on the market. We start with one segment of this city and it's going to grow into other segments of rent control. Those that own homes, that rent their homes. It's, I'm not, I'm talking about other people that own homes.
Please, you know what? We were all respectful when people spoke at the podium. I expect civility here. Thank you.
I think we had an agreement for 10 years. We ought to stand behind what we agreed upon and we need to move forward. There are government assisted programs out there for rent, but we can't make a decision on emotion. That's why we're in the situation we're in today and it has to be factual. I see a lot of people shaking heads and I take it as the other side is lying. And I got to tell you one thing that really perturbed me at the last meeting was when someone said, we want the ability to be able to open the books of the property owners and determine what kind of profit they can make. That's socialism, right there. And there is no bloody way that I would agree on such a thing. Has that mentality changed? I have no idea. But I don't support looking at it. I support letting the 10 years go by. Madam Mayor.
You know, when we went, we spent, I guess, was 17 months at a table across the street looking at this, listening to everyone, what everyone had to say, whether it was the park owners or the residents of the park. And I thought there was a lot of negotiating going back and forth, even with the CPI index. I know Mr. Hall wanted the other index used rather than the LA, Long Beach, San Diego. The park owner said, fine, we'll change that. And I thought I saw a lot of give and take and going back and forth. 17 months. I can't tell you how many meetings I was in. I know Ms. Waterfield was there, but we were in those meetings until the end when there was, a lot of the nuances were taken care of. But even during that time, people were coming up to the podium and bringing up a new issue that they didn't like. And it was like they came in the middle of this movie and they didn't know what the plot was. And we went on like this for a long time and we kept addressing all those extra issues. And, you know, I'm not saying that this model lease is perfect. I don't think that anything probably we would decide would be perfect with everyone. But we sitting up here also have to figure out how we're going to pay for stuff. So all the people out there watching on TV tonight, other people who are living maybe homes, apartments, everything, they're going to have to pay for this too. It's not just you, it's not just us that are going to have to pay for this. And like Mr. Cordero said, where does the money come from? They think it's a good idea. I can tell you, when we built our police department here in Santa Maria, when we cut that ribbon, it was paid for. When we built that library over here, when we cut that ribbon, it was paid for. When we built the transit station off of Boone Street, when we cut that ribbon, it was paid for. We did not go out to the people of Santa Maria and say, we want more of your money. Because people here are working people and they say, hey, you have to live within your means. When we opened two new fire stations and we cut that ribbon, they were paid for. And that's the kind of history that the city has had. Now, you're coming to us and I don't like to do policy on emotion and I, we have done it once before and some of you weren't here at that time, but I thought it was a bad idea. I voted no at that time and I still think it's a bad idea. But you're coming here tonight and you're saying, you know, we need help. So we have, we here, sitting here, making decisions, have to be a little bit more creative. I don't know what that means in being creative, but we, I think we have to figure out, as leaders in the community, figure out solutions for this. I don't know what those solutions will be, but I, listening to Dr. Rupert tonight and some of the things he had in mind, going back to Mr. Stillwell, and I had spoken to him early about maybe some rental assistance. Not everyone living in the mobile home parks needs the help. But I think those that do, they're coming here and saying, hey, city council, help us out. I think that's fine. And I think that maybe we need to look at something else and see what's going on someplace else that we can help. The economy is lousy and we all know that. You know, we, sitting up here at the dais have continued, like I said, every single time we built something, it was paid for when we cut that ribbon. And I just think that is, it's what we've done here. I'm probably the only one here that's been in business. So I have, I've signed the front of the check. And when you are in business, you pay everybody else before you pay yourself. So I think, you know, I feel responsible that we need to do something to help people and I can't even tell you what that is right now. But I certainly would be open to working with Mr. Stillwell and figuring what that is.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you. There's two points that really caught my attention. First, we resume all of this conversation, most of the conversation about money, money and how much it's going to spend and everything is about it. But we enact ordinances often in the city of Santa Maria that cost money for everybody, even those that are not affected. So I think that this is a discussion that has to be bigger, more broad. And I hear from fellow council members, mayor, about being more creative, how we can, if it's not an ordinance, what can we do to fix or at least? Because, I mean, there's not a key magic, you know, the magic stick to clear all the issues. Housing, it's affordable housing, it's an issue all over the country. But there's ways that us as representatives can give a little bit of support for people that it's having, that is struggling, our constituents, our taxpayers. Because at the end of the day, we're not talking about people from other states or other cities, it's Santa Maria. And so I would be, I would definitely be open to have a broader discussion about finding that, trying to find that solution together and having that discussion. So, thank you.
So what I've heard is, so on my end, I would like to reiterate that I would be open to having staff take a deeper dive, taking a deeper look at the current enforceable model lease that we've adopted and seeing if there is room for improvement there and to see if there are alternatives that can help alleviate some of the concerns that were brought up. Not necessarily saying it's rent stabilization, but definitely looking at how can we, just taking a deeper dive at the enforceable model lease, seeing if there's other opportunities for supporting the residents through that. So, Mr. Escobedo, are you in support of that as well?
Yeah, definitely.
You know, this is probably jumping ahead, but a comment, five C on the agenda tonight is we are going to have to do something with our municipal wastewater collection. We're looking at a $200 million bill that the state has said, hey, you've got to do this. We have no control over that. And this is continuous with, we get all these mandates from the state, $200 million. And that's going to fall on all of us. So it's, we were able to get an extension on the application, but it still is a hefty, hefty bill that we're going to have to pay. And we have to figure out all the time how we need to do that. And it's a constant thing coming down from the state. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind looking at something for rental assistance. I am not interested in looking into the model lease at all. And so if someone'd like...
I would like to make a motion, Madam Mayor, to direct staff to take a deeper dive at the enforceable model lease and look at alternatives such as possibly an MOU or some sort of other alternatives for the meantime that can allow us to explore what options we have. And also, again, having listening sessions with community members and the park owners to ensure that we are doing our due diligence, are really looking at what we've implemented and seeing if there's room for improvement.
Okay, we spent, like I said, 17 months looking at this thing over and over. And I know Ms. Waterfield, I don't know if you attended any of the meetings, but I certainly hope if you guys need to be attending meetings because...
If I'm invited, I'll be there.
No, because there's a lot of times that people aren't there when they say they're going to be there. So you need to make a commitment if you're going to be involved.
I'll be there.
Madam Mayor, there's a first and a second, but what I want to say, can we have discussion?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I completely disagree with that motion, only because you'll never satisfy Gary Hall and his group of a deeper dive. The hole does never get that deep. It just gets deeper and deeper and deeper. Mayor said, we've had this discussion, 17 months. Year later, you come back, want to change, want to change, want to change. And sure, I'm for having Jason Stillwell, our city manager, look at to rental assistance because actually that's what this is about. It is about rental assistance for those that can't afford it. Not every park mobile homeowner in all of these facilities agrees with the few that are sitting here. We talk about how many residents are out there and we have 0.001 here. And we're making an emotional choice on rent control where there could be assistance
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Okay. I would, I would like to consider that maybe Ms. Soto will withdraw her motion as it reads, as she said it.
Madam Mayor, sorry to interrupt. Just wanted to verify city manager, if it's, are we in a motion? In a second.
We are, we're in discussion.
Are we in discussion?
We're in discussion right now.
Okay.
So we can amend the motion?
Yes.
And that motion should not limit, a motion should not limit to just look at the model lease. I think that we should broaden the motion and look at other options. Can we do that, Mr. Stillwell?
I agree.
Look at other options that would, that would work toward a level of resolution and not, and not, not, let's not pigeonhole ourselves into just, all we can look at is the model lease.
Right.
So, I mean, if we're looking at the model lease, we can look at the rental assistance, we can look at the federal government, the state government and all these other people. Now, I don't know we're going to find anything. I have no idea. But, but it's a broader avenue to look at and not so narrow. And I realize that after 17 months, that the mayor and Ms. Waterfield, they kind of had it. So, but I, I don't think an ordinance, and I think I've said that, we've all said that, but I have no problems with looking at alternatives.
Great.
You give a crack and it's going to be boom.
Well, if we find the answer to boom, then we've done a great job.
Well, and we can do that with Mr. Stillwell searching for the rent, for rental assistance. Rental assistance. But I disagree with diving back into the ordinance or into the lease agreement, model lease agreement.
Could I get clarification from staff on what the motion is?
Yeah. So what I wrote down, I was trying to type fast, but so direct staff to examine enhancing the enforceable model lease, look at alternatives, have listening sessions with community members and park owners and see if there's room for improvement.
And rent stipends.
Yeah.
That's what Mr. Cordero's...
That is that with the other options.
Stipends?
Stipends?
Oh, yeah.
Alternative, okay.
Let me ask you something, Mr. Stillwell. This agreement, this model lease agreement that was supposed to run for 10 years, we, we, the city, gave their word on this. So what does that mean legally?
You're up.
So the agreement for the enforcement of the model lease did contain a provision where the city agreed that it would refrain from considering implementing a rent control ordinance for the term of the agreement, which is 10 years. So that was the policy statement agreed to by the council. That was the, the council felt that that was kind of the consideration for the park owners. They were going to agree to this model lease and the city was going to agree not to look at rent control for 10 years. If we want to change direction and now look at rent control, we would need to research the impacts and the implications of that because that clearly is a shift in policy and what we agreed to in the original agreement.
Would you consider that a violation of our agreement?
I wouldn't be comfortable saying that at this time, but it definitely would be something we would need to research.
Wait, 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 Carlos. So then what does this mean with this motion is, I guess, where I, because it seems to me it's in conflict with the agreement that we agreed to.
It potentially could be. What you could direct is for staff to look at what Councilwoman Soto has proposed and to provide you with a proposal as to what that would look like, what staff feels that could be done as far as what areas they could look into and what any implications might be of any of the actions requested.
And at the moment, my motion does not say, does it say, my motion did not articulate rent stabilization. It articulated looking at the current model lease that we have and looking at enhancing it or finding other alternatives.
Right. That's correct.
And so all their, I mean, investigating that too, I think would be...
Finding other alternatives to the model lease or other alternatives... Or finding other alternatives to the model lease or other alternatives within the model lease. That's what I don't...
In the model lease.
Okay, okay.
Or MOUs.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So, that means that we sign a document that is putting us in a 10-year agreement that we will not talk about rent, rent control ordinance, but they can either sign that or not. So, I don't know, it seems like a really unfair position. I know that it's, I was not part of that conversation at that time, but I hope we can get to a better, better agreement this time or see how we can improve. So, just, just want to make that comment.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Waterfield?
That's the point I'm trying to make. You're going to go in there and you're going to redo this agreement, and it needs to stand the length of time, and we just need to have the assistance for the, in rent. I just heard it from his mouth, that he wants to go in and redo this whole thing because it's not fair. I'm sorry, it's...
No, just, just one extra. I did not say that. I would like that...
Then I don't know what you meant. I don't know what you meant then. You got to be a little bit more clear.
I would, I would not agree on putting amounts of other council members' amount. So, my point, my comment was that it's not, I mean, that provision, for me, from my perspective, it's not a good deal, and, and I hope that we can get into an agreement where all the mobile homeowners can jump in, and, because I know that is their business, you know? I do, I met with them, we talked with their representative, we talked about, and I do understand that there's, you know, it's a business, but also, we have our community. So, there's need to be this level, and it's never going to be perfect like any other ordinance, any other law in the world, but we need to, and that's why I'm supporting this, the motion, that we need to at least look back at it. I mean, there's a reason why a lot of people is coming here, and a lot of people is calling us, and a lot of people is emailing us, so let's give a, let's give a shot.
I think just to reiterate what the city attorney said, so there's two things with that 10-year statement. So, the 10-year statement was a commitment by you, not them.
Yeah.
And so, the lease term, the model lease, is a 10-year model lease that the council adopted or facilitated that we will help enforce for the 10 years. So, that's where it involves them. So, it's, there's two different things I wanted to clarify or reiterate what the city attorney said.
Did you want to say, did you want to say something? Okay. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second.
Can I hear the motion again, please?
Yeah.
Can I hear the motion from you, Mr. Stillwell?
All right. I mean, if I got it right the last time, so it was direct staff to examine enhancing the enforceable model lease and look at alternatives and having listening sessions with community members and park owners and seeing if there's room for improvement.
And looking at other alternatives.
Thank God I'm not an attorney, but I, I'm hearing what Ms. Waterfield says. This body, although not these people, this body entered into an agreement two years ago that said, we will do this, and now we're saying, we don't want to do this anymore, we want to do this.
Very well said.
To me, that smacks of, of the possibility of coming back for some litigation. I don't, I don't think you can say that right now. You've probably got a lot of homework to do, but it, it smacks of saying, it certainly gives the crack in the door here to say, we have reneged, whether it's a person on either side of the fence can say, wait, you can't do that. You've already agreed on this, and now you want to do this.
But the agreement was that we wouldn't enact a rent stabilization, and we're not doing that through this process. Through this motion, we're not doing that.
I know that, but we also have an agreement in this model lease, and that's part of it, but we also have that agreement. And so, now we're coming back and saying, no, we want to take another look at this, so...
And we're reneging.
Well, and that's our job as elected officials, to look at how we can improve the policies that we've enacted when we hear that they're not working.
Well, I think it's your opinion, whether it's working or not. It's working for some people, and it's not working for everyone.
I said, if we're hearing that they're not working.
Thank you, Mr. Stillwell.
Call the roll. Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
No.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino? No. Motion carries. Okay. I want to thank all of you tonight for being here. I know it's really late, and I certainly appreciate the civility in everyone, so thank you very much. So, next, we have a regular business item. Oh, let's wait till everyone leaves.
Thank you.
Where are we at? Five Ds in David?
C.
C. Oh, okay.
Okay, next we have, next we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
Yes, the city council will receive a presentation about new requirements for the wastewater treatment plant.
Boy, that's going to be expensive.
Oh, that's right. Oh, I'm sorry. Let's stop. Yes.
I've had two of those big ones. Oh my gosh, I'd be up all night. I didn't, I didn't, oh, did it help? Oh, good, good. Oh, man. I know it. That's crazy.
We'll spend five minutes on two, two million and, you know...
Two million. I wish it was two million.
Two hundred million.
Okay, next we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will receive a presentation about new requirements for the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, and the staff report is made by, to be made by Director of Utilities, Mr. Springer.
Good, good late evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Tonight, I'm asking you to essentially receive and file a presentation regarding new permit requirements at the wastewater treatment plant. As I work my way through tonight, here's an outline of what we'll be discussing. We're going to talk a little bit about the background at the wastewater treatment plant, the current permit requirements, the new permit requirements, the pathway toward compliance for what we want to achieve, city impacts, including fiscal considerations, immediate next steps that we'll be looking for at staff level and also for council action, and then questions or comments. So, our wastewater treatment plant sits out at South Black Road. We receive sewer flows from commercial, industrial, and residential customers, both within the city of Santa Maria. There are also customers in the airport district area and then some customers in Laguna Sanitation District. We have a swap agreement essentially with Laguna Sanitation that some of their customers flow into pipes that go out to our wastewater treatment plant, and likewise, there are customers in the south part of the city that flow to Laguna Sanitation, and we have a swap agreement whereby the agency receiving the greater amount of flow at the end of the year pays the other, the difference. So, I know there's been some discussions lately with Lafco and looking at ways to efficiently serve customers, and I just want to say that in the south part of the city, that's already been accomplished through agreements with the city in Laguna San. It minimizes the cost for both agencies to provide that. Also, at the wastewater treatment plant, we have a septic receiving station. This is relatively unique in the area for our wastewater treatment plant to receive septic. So, this includes septic tanks that might be pumped out. It was quite busy as communities to the north of us, like Los Osos, were putting in sewer plants, and all of their septic systems were abandoned. But also, it's an important service that we provide to the community as you travel the agricultural fields and you see the porta-potties and that sort of thing out there. That septic is received at our wastewater treatment plant. It's a significant flow. At the plant, on average, any given day on average, we receive seven million gallons a day of sewage to treat. So, our principal processes out at the plant, we have essentially headworks at the front of the plant that provides screening of large items, rags, quick PSA, flushable wipes. While flushable create problems in our pipes and at the wastewater plant, do not flush them. What we're looking for is toilet paper out there, so... Yeah, they, they don't break down. It's the same as if someone was flushing a, like a hand towel, like it's, it does not work in the system. So, after the headworks, we have a grit removal that goes through grit screws, then we do primary clarifiers, trickling filters, another clarifier, secondary trickling filters, and then secondary clarifiers. Then that effluent goes out to the percolation ponds. The solids that are removed from the process go into anaerobic digesters. After that process is complete, it goes to sledge drying beds, and then that material is taken to a third party that does composting on the site. So, our current permit is an individual permit. That goes back to 2010. That is about when we did the expansion at the wastewater plant, and the important thing to note here is that it was an individual permit. So, the requirements for the discharge were based specifically on our permit and the processes at our plant. We're allowed to treat up to 13 and a half million gallons a day. It has a monitor and reporting program, effluent limitations, discharge specifications, groundwater limitations, so we out there and we, we monitor our groundwater wells in the area, anti-degradation policy with respect to the groundwater in the area, salt and nutrient program, pre-treatment specifications. These are programs where, for example, restaurants, you might be familiar with grease traps and grease interceptors, that sort of thing. Those are the pre-treatment programs we're required to have based on the size of our plant, as well as at industrial facilities where they may need to do pre-treatment to remove certain things that would be damaging to our processes, and then also specifications on our biosolids. Our current permit, as I noted in the top right page, is about 15 pages. We were notified by the Regional Water Quality Control Board on November 5th of 2021 that the city was going to become subject to general permit requirements. The Regional Water Quality Control Board, over the course of the last several years, worked toward a general permit discharge requirement for wastewater treatment plants that discharge more than 100,000 gallons per day to land. At our wastewater plant, as I mentioned, we go to perk ponds. We do not discharge to a body of water. Also noted, we provided comments, significant comments during the development of the general permit, that they should take into consideration the uniqueness of wastewater plants such as ours. For example, ours is currently permitted at 13.5 million gallons a day, essentially almost 100 times bigger than the minimum size they talked about with the general permit of 100,000. But however, they did adopt the, the general permit, and then we received notification in November that we were to submit a notice of intent essentially to comply with those new permit requirements. That original deadline was February 5th. Staff had concerns about the ability to meet that deadline is, you can see, from November 5th to February 5th is a pretty short period of time and includes the holidays. It was also during some pretty significant COVID spikes, so we submitted a letter to the regional board requesting a six-month extension to allow us time to work on that. So, the new permit, 88 pages. This is the information in the permit, so it's a significant change. This would be, the general permit order is, the 2020 date indicates the year that it was adopted, 2020, so it's 10 years newer. So, as I mentioned, it applies to domestic wastewater systems on the central coast, flows greater than 100,000. So, this will cover a lot of very small plants that can maybe make modifications to how they operate the plant to meet the discharge requirements. At our wastewater plant, due to the size and the permit requirements, that will be difficult. So, upon the notice of applicability issued by the regional board, our existing individual permit would be terminated. We would fall under the terms of the general permit. So, that is the, the process that we're working on. So, some of the permit requirements, you'll note on our individual permit, I had all check marks. Here, there are some open boxes that are issues for our existing plant to meet, and we'll get into specific details about that when we, when we get into the permit application process. The pre-treatment program is something that we already had. I've already talked about that. Monitor and reporting, while slightly different, is something we've already been dealing with. Effluent limitations, these have stricter effluent limitations or additional effluent limitations that our wastewater treatment plant currently does not have, and our processes are not designed to address. Organic loading limitations, same thing. Of course, groundwater limitations, we're already dealing with it. Technical report requirements. Part of the permit requirement is to include the climate change adaptation plan, and how we'll address that with our wastewater plant. And then the other check marks are things that we talked about previously that our existing plant kind of addresses. So, the permit application process is not small. plant kind of addresses. So the permit application process is not small. And this is part of the issue in submitting, while it sounds simple, submit a notice of intent by February 5th or August 5th. There is a lot that goes into it. Feasibility analysis, conceptual wastewater plan, water balances with precipitation values, threat and complexity, the application fee, and engineering report regarding the applicability, groundwater monitoring, Saturday sewer, general permit applicability, operator certification, SEQA status, monitoring report procedures, and then application for a submittal for our waste discharge requirements in the Form 200, includes the engineering report, technical report. So it's a lot more than just signing our name on the dotted line. Once the regional board gets the notice of intent, they will review it. If they agree with the information, that's when they would issue the notice of applicability. They may impose requirements on how we achieve compliance, and that is when our individual permit would be terminated and we would become subject to the general permit, which would have the item seven there, the compliance criteria of modern requirements and reporting requirements. So in broad terms, these are kind of checklist that we have to do. But as I mentioned, there are significant studies involved with these. So in order to achieve this, there's a couple of things that we need to do, and we describe it really as a compliance path. We've had ongoing communications with the Regional Water Quality Control Board. We need technical and professional project management support. Almost immediately upon being notified by the regional board of our requirement to enroll under the general permit, city staff reached out to several consulting firms to get proposals to provide technical and professional project support to get us to the notice of intent. Our intent is to have the notice of intent submission, then develop conceptual alternatives to current treatment. So as I mentioned, our plant has some difficulty achieving some of the requirements. Then we would need to do a request for proposals for programmatic support, right? So the first consultant is just getting us the information we need to all have compiled for the notice of intent. Another request for proposals would be essentially programmatic support for us to get to compliance in the long run. This would include looking at a wastewater treatment plant, master plan update, evaluation of existing operations in detail, treatment alternatives to help us achieve compliance, feasibility studies, and then the time schedule to achieve compliance. This would also include detailed analysis on the costs, cash flow, and funding scenarios. Following that, there would be another RFP to actually get into the design of the chosen alternative. Ultimately, that would lead to bids for construction and a construction project. This is not a short or simple compliance path. There are significant milestones that have to be met and significant costs as well. I drew it out on a Gantt chart that's going to be way too small. That looks something like that. All those bars mean that I'm an engineer. It's complicated and you can trust me. No, just kidding. On the top left is the Regional Water Quality Control Board notice, and then you'll see the work there that's being done by GeoSynTech. To get us to the notice of intent, we are currently in the process of sampling information at our plant. As I mentioned, our plant, some of the new requirements our plant currently does not have. So we do not have test data on how effective our plant is at certain processes because they weren't, we didn't have to know it previously. So GeoSynTech put together a sampling plan so that, for example, we can see how effective our primary clarifier is at removing certain constituents like biochemical oxygen demand or suspended solids or some of the other requirements that we'll have moving forward. They're beginning some, based on that sampling data, we'll look at some preliminary alternatives with respect to what our treatment regime needs to be. And then some very, very broad program estimates. That will allow us to submit the notice of intent. As you can see, in that work, we also, in the meantime, need to get the RFP, a request for proposals out for a programmatic consultant to start to develop the wastewater master plan, you know, the detailed alternatives analysis, feasibility, timelines, cash flow, funding, preferred alternatives. Then a design consultant, and we work our way through, plan specs, estimate, SEQA will be involved, starting relatively quick in there. The, about that time, we'll also be looking at our staffing needs and training. Our plant has a certain staff level based on the type of treatment regime we have as well as the level of certification required. The more complicated the plant, the more staff we need to operate it, and the higher the certifications required to operate the plant. So we'll want to make sure that our existing staff is trained and ready to operate the plant once we build it and construct it, and that we have the appropriate staffing level that we would need. Given the new constituent requirements, there will be certainly more testing required as well as the need to adjust operations at the plant. At a wastewater plant, it is, it's a biological process. So essentially, we're, for lack of a better term, we're trying to do what occurs in nature on a huge scale and much quicker. So as we move into these new processes, it'll be important that the operators optimize how those biological activities occur throughout the plant to make sure that we achieve compliance with the plant, and also it makes it cost effective. The big line across the bottom, and we're going to talk about that a little bit, is in this timeline also, we'll be looking at necessary adjustment to wastewater rates. There is, these costs are significant. It is an enterprise fund, and it's funded by rates of the city's customers. So that's the big long arrow at the bottom. So when we looked at the existing conditions, our consultant so far has done that. I do want to point out that the big check mark on the top is our plant is fully functional and compliant with current permit requirements. But there are portions of the plant that were built in the 1930s. That's ninety years old. The concrete needs some work, needs some maintenance. Our trickling filter media is forty-seven years old. We have concrete degradation and metal corrosion. We have a digester that's offline because it was built in the 1940s, and it needs significant work. Our subsurface piping is aged as well. We have limited sledge drying bed capacity based on the space out there as well as our percolation pond steering capacity. So one shiny spot in the rust is that as a city, we have been, we did upgrade the plant, and we've been making it operational year in, year out, but with knowing that the regional board staff could tap us on the shoulder to look at these new treatment requirements, there hasn't been a significant reinvestment in that infrastructure out there with respect to upgrading the plant because we didn't want to spend money on a treatment regime that didn't meet the new requirements. So the investment that we will need to make with respect to the wastewater plant will also address a lot of these issues of the aging infrastructure at the same time. So when we talk about the wastewater treatment plant effectiveness, we did initiate the sampling plan already. It began in March, and it takes several months. We have to collect the data. The flow changes throughout. We are an agricultural community, and the processing that we get from the processing plant changes throughout the spring. You know, a certain processor in town gets peppers, let's say, from the Yuma area, starting in February or March, and then, right, maybe then it's local truck crops and vegetables, and they discharge to our wastewater plant. So we want to make sure that we have good data. We then will evaluate that data to look at optimization of our existing plant. Based on the discharge requirements, we do not believe we will be able to optimize the plant to meet the requirements. One of the new requirements is a significant reduction in where we're at with BOD, which is biochemical oxygen demand, and a few others. We'll talk about those on the next slide. But the optimization part would be, we would try to optimize our existing plan as much as possible, particularly during the interim, as we do our pathway toward compliance. So we'll want the plant to work as effectively as possible then. We'll also be using the data to evaluate alternatives. Those might be upgrades to existing facility or just a straight up modification to our treatment regime.
I'm just going to say, this is all so cheerful.
Sorry.
How much is a master plan update going to cost us?
Right to it.
And how long does that take?
So we have started to put money, we've said, we requested money in the budget this year to the tune of half a million dollars a year to start on the engineering costs to get these studies rolling and to get this information together. I can cut quickly to the chase. The other plants in the area that had a smaller discharge than ours were north of a hundred million dollars. It is not out of the realm of possibility with what we're seeing with inflation costs and everything and that the all in, all done cost at this plant could approach two hundred million dollars for the city of Santa Maria. There, there are opportunities for grants. A lot of times, those are related to disadvantaged communities. There are significant portions of Santa Maria that are, but they look at the overall service area for Santa Maria. The last time we looked, we didn't qualify completely for that. Staff, stealing some of my thunder here, but okay. Staff has already had discussions with the State Water Resources Control Board with respect to revolving funds. So there are state revolving funds, clean water state revolving funds. They provide in some instances, well, it's always called a loan. Some include loan forgiveness, depending on, then it becomes a grant. But they are about as low interest loans as you can get. Of course, with interest rates climbing back up, it's hard to project. I do have a very back of the napkin sketch at the end. I'm leery to provide those costs upfront because we haven't done the analysis. But I do think it's important that the council understand the implications for the community with respect to these or how it could go. So we would be looking at potential upgrades and modifications. So the limitations that we have on our existing effluent is nutrient removal. This includes both nitrogen and phosphorus. Right now, our plant has no requirement for nutrient removal. So we would have to look at treatment regimes that would meet these requirements. Biochemical oxygen demand is also kind of how active the bugs still are in the wastewater, in consuming materials, and then also total suspended solids. In our preliminary looks at other trickling filters and the information that we have available, we do not believe that simply modifying operations at our plant will achieve these three critical aspects. So that leads us to evaluating upgrades and modifications. This might be an activated sledge plant, aerobic granulated sledge plant, or a membrane bioreactor. Each of those have different upfront capital costs and then different operating costs. So those will all be benefit cost analysis that we'll be looking at. I know, luckily, it's a long time after dinner. Yes, ma'am? Yeah, that's okay. That is nitrates, yeah. So it's both nitrates and phosphorus. Yeah, so interesting, yeah, interestingly enough, the groundwater that we currently, we discharge to percolation ponds that then perk in, the groundwater in the area where our percolation ponds are, are actually higher in nitrates than the water that we currently discharge. However, the interpretation of the regulation is that wastewater plants should not discharge at a nitrogen level higher than the drinking water standard. And that's based on the idea that you would not be degrading the natural resource. So even though we currently discharge to a groundwater with higher nitrates, the limit here would be at the drinking water standard, which would be ten or below. So those are three very broad types of upgrades or modifications that, like I said, they will provide kind of a back of the napkin estimate. Those would need to be refined as we work our way through a wastewater treatment plant master plan. So city impact and fiscal considerations. This is a very long-term capital project. It allows the city to reinvest in the current wastewater treatment plant, for example, in the headworks or the screening areas. We'd be looking at upgrades and modifications. The overall cost is unknown. They're anticipated to be in excess of a hundred million dollars and could reach two hundred million dollars for the complete program. Wastewater Enterprise Fund, funding strategies are going to be developed as we work on this, and we are looking at the grant opportunities. And as I mentioned, we already met via Zoom with the State Water Resources Control Board regarding Clean Water State Revolving Fund. We will, pretty much, upon putting the project together, and by that I mean like submit the NOI, we'll put our marker down with the State Water Revolving Fund to get on the list and get in the queue. Whether or not the city chooses to go with that funding in the future, at least it kind of puts our, gets us in line. The funding available through there is also for, can pay for planning, funding, design, and construction. So it could be a long term. And as I mentioned, the interest rate on those loans are lower than if we were to go out on the bond market and issue bonds ourselves. So it is an, it would be an opportunity that it's important for staff to evaluate and look at as far as a cost-effective solution to help spread the cost of this project out over thirty years instead of a one-time capital shot. I mean, that's what we'd be looking at. So what would that mean for wastewater rates? Significant. The top line there, right now, our estimated water revenues for next year are thirteen and a half million dollars. That's complete revenues. So if we go down and we look at the increased cost drivers for this project, capital costs, if it's in the two hundred million dollar range financed at thirty years at five percent, that's thirteen million dollars a year in paying our loan on it. Operating costs for the change in processes, activated sludge, staffing, that sort of thing. It just takes more electricity because of the recirculation, the pumping, aeration, estimated at twenty percent of current revenues. And then day-to-day cost drivers go up. There's additional chemical additions that go on, the personnel, and just electricity at the plant, some other things. So these are, once again, very broad stroke estimates. So those potential increase in cost drivers are about twenty-four point two million dollars a year until the loan would be paid off in thirty more years. So when you're looking at our existing revenues at thirteen and a half, potential cost drivers of additional twenty-four, the total potential future revenue requirement could be in the thirty-seven point seven million dollar range. Yes? Right. So timing of this is interesting. When we submit the NOI, the notice of intent, and then the regional board gives us the notice of applicability, there is about a two-year window where we would be under existing permit parameters or the optimized permit parameters after the information we have. There are opportunities, and I'm sorry, I grazed over this a little bit. There are time schedule orders that we can request with the regional board, which essentially kind of sets milestones and gives us the opportunity to do this. Frankly, even if we had three hundred million dollars in the bank, I cannot deliver this project to you in a year. It's not achievable. The amount of time it takes to do the studies, get the information together, the SEQA, the training of staff, designing the project, building the project, because in the meantime, we have to treat eight million gallons a day. We can't just turn off those flows. So we have to work with our methods of operation and build the project. So part of what we'll be analyzing and working with the regional board is requesting those time schedule orders, a timeline for us to get to this compliance. At the end, they want us to discharge a certain amount of effluent. We absolutely want to get there. We just need time to achieve that, right? So part of that is it also allows us then to look at our rates and start to address those rates. And something that Santa Maria has always done is kind of provided a consistent price point for our users, right? So we don't jump rates in seven years to triple them. So part of what we would be looking at, and this summer, we will be starting a new cost of service study on water and sewer rates. So the information that we have with respect to this will start to feed into our ten to fifteen-year timeline on costs so that we can look at those rates and start to smooth those things out. Cash that we would have on hand would be money that we would not have to borrow. The mayor mentioned that this evening, that typically Santa Maria, as much as possible, has tried to borrow as little as possible. Yes, potentially. That would be considered a violation. So part of, an important part of this is working with regional board staff. This plant is, I couldn't say for certain, but probably the biggest plant of this style. That would be under this general permit. So it's important for the city to comply, but I think... So it's important for the city to comply, but I think also it's a success for the regional board to work with the city so that we can demonstrate the ability to get there. I won't say over the long haul, over a defined period of time, but it...
What is the age of this new sewer plant? How long? How long would this take us to the next?
Sure.
I know this is a city sewer plant, but could we, like Enterprise and county, you know, hook up, or you got to jail right there?
Right. So the sewer flows from the North County Jail go to Laguna County Sanitation. So they have an existing plant, and gravity flow pushes that sewer that way.
But that thing is old. I mean...
It's had modifications. Part of also that will, not exactly the question that you've asked, but as community development works its way through the general plan, and we start to talk about where we're gonna grow, how we're gonna accommodate that housing, and where that density occurs, that'll be part of this wastewater master plan. So it's not just treating that effluent, but it's making sure that our perk ponds can handle that additional flow going in, and that our collection system is sized appropriately to meet those needs. As far as taking on additional flows, there, other than the flows that already go to the Laguna Sanitation, there is not a significant small package plant near us or anything like that. There are onesie-twosie septic systems out in the county, you know, I don't know, two miles down the road, a mile down the road, Bonita School, for example, right? They have sewer flows. But they're not significant for a lift station to push that sewer back to, you know, two miles to us or that sort of thing. So certainly, we'd be looking at any opportunities that we might have to partner, so that the, this additional costs aren't simply captured within our own customer base. By expanding that customer base, there's more opportunity to spread that cost as well, and that would be something we'd be looking at. But I know Laguna Sanitation, right? They've set up their rates and their plan based on assuming on taking those flows as well. So for us, you know, when we look at these potential impact rates, and once again, these are mostly orders of magnitude, so, you know, the council can understand the ask that staff is asking for this, for this NOI to meet this requirement. But it's, it is the potential of rates being roughly, you know, three times more than they are now. We need an additional 27 million in revenue when we're at 13.5. So, one thing, historically, let's see, try to find some bright line. Historically, our sewer rates are very low in the region. This only affects the sewer side of the rates, not the water side. Those other cost drivers related to the water side would be separate and apart from this. So when I talk about these increases, and that's why I was careful here to talk about the increased cost drivers on the wastewater side. But as we go through our cost of study this year, and look at those rates and projections, we'll be looking at what that smoothing would start to look like as those rates come in. And the picture will become more clear as we negotiate the time schedule order with the regional board staff, and then we start to look at these alternatives and what those costs are. But I thought it important to at least share this information in a public forum with the council to be aware of that. And then that really kind of leads us to the next steps. We're gonna complete the work necessary to submit the notice of intent by August 5. And the intent is to come back to city council for requests to authorize the submission of the notice of intent to the Regional Water Quality Control Board. That is going to be a, you know, binders of packets of information. But given the implications it has for rates and the future costs associated with meeting the requirements for that general permit, I wanted to make sure that the council had as much information as possible to make that informed decision. And then, just, I know we've been taking questions as we go, but...
So what questions would you like to ask anyone in the council?
Nobody better ask any questions.
We still have plenty of time, mister. We still have plenty of time.
So you're saying that the timeline is about a 15-year timeline for this, right? Until we see our new wastewater treatment plan?
There have been discussions with the regional board. Their preference is like five years. As I mentioned, we've had discussions that even with unlimited budget, with the way, the ability to get staffing, to get people on board, to get things rolling, that's not realistic for us. I think the horizon, if we look at two years utilizing our existing permit requirements, and then start to put that time schedule order together, I think it's realistic to look at, you know, this new effluent being in about the 10-year range. As we negotiated, it may be in the seven to 10-year range. But they've been pretty clear that 15 years is on the far side. In fact, when I made the comment about, wow, it'd be difficult for us to meet the February 5 deadline, one of the comments from regional board staff was, well, why didn't you already start work on this? Because you knew the general permit got adopted. I just kind of said, well, because we didn't know when you were gonna come tell us that you were gonna enroll us. So, so just to be aware that, as much as possible, staff is working on those things and negotiating with what we think can be reasonably expected and delivered by the city and by the community, and at the same time, achieve the goals that the regional board's trying to achieve.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
The gallons per day that you retreat out there are, what again?
Seven and a half million gallons a day. And what's interesting is we're permitted, I don't know, maybe I shouldn't digress, but I have the pool much later. So 13.5 million gallons a day is what we're allowed as far as our fluid loading. But what's happening with low-flow toilets and that sort of thing is the concentration of sewer flow is greater. So frankly, even though our plant is permitted up to 13.5 million gallons a day, we couldn't get there with our current treatment regime, because the biological loading is so much stronger with the more intense sewer flows from low-flow toilets and that sort of thing. So this, you know, if we look at what the, what opportunities we have here, the fact is, we need to do work on our perk ponds to achieve the goals, to meet the growth that we're looking at with the general plan, and what we have for our reening numbers and that sort of thing. So there was gonna need to be a reinvestment anyway. So being able to meet new discharge requirements, how long these new discharge requirements, frankly, if the drinking water standard is what our effluent requirement is for, let's say nutrient removal, I would suspect that that would stick for quite some time. It's not like that constraint I would anticipate becoming more strict in the next 10 or 15 years. This investment would be for a plant that would be, you know, the future of the city for the next, I mean, our current plant had stuff that wasn't put in in the 1930s. So this would be a long-term investment that would then serve, I think the plant was built out there in 1908, city was incorporated in 1905. So it'll serve the future of the community very well.
Any other questions of Mr. Springer? Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak or written correspondence?
No, ma'am, and there's no requests online.
Okay, I'll bring this back to the council for any further discussion.
You can file.
You can file.
So file.
Okay. The next item will be reported by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So I thought Shad would mention, you may have seen him walking around pushing a baby stroller over the weekend with his daughter's, he's a grandfather now, so his daughter had a child, so that was niche. And then the next meeting of the city council is June 21, and we will bring you the budget for your consideration and adoption. That concludes my report.
Okay, let's do oral reports of council members. Mace, I'll start with you.
I went to the rodeo over the weekend, and I wore my cow person boots and my cow person hat. Mr. Cordero would have been so proud.
Oh, you saw me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw you. Big footprints like this in the deer out there.
Ms. Waterfield?
I have one report to make, and I'm so excited about this. Our police council golf tournament and comedy dinner is completely sold out. We have 152 golfers, and our dinners are completely sold out. We have Madam Mayor's attending, Councilmember Caderos attending, Jason is also attending along with Andrew, and we've got a great comedian lined up, and everyone's gonna have a, have a great time. But this is, we're starting to get sold out now, so this is, this is great. Took it off the website, and it's gonna benefit a lot for the Santa Maria PD.
Andrew, you're gonna be the comedian?
Yes.
Just so you know.
I'll get ready.
Mr. Escobedo?
Now, that's funny.
Okay, I'm still writing this down. Kind of pass it out to Mr. Corleone.
Yes. Right after the last council meeting, I did the Ben Hayes Show. On the 26th, I attended the CCWA meeting in Buellton. And I can't tell you how interesting that is. It's very complex, very sophisticated, and very important to our community. On the 30th, I attended the memorial service at the cemetery for the Memorial Day. Very well-attended and very touching. On the 31st, I was at a meeting for the rent stabilization here at the city. On the 3rd of June, I was at a dinner at the rodeo where I saw Councilman Soto, Councilwoman Soto. Also very, very, you know, very well-attended, a nice dinner. And there was a lot of talk that they were, they maxed out. They sold tickets, and they did a great job out there. Tina did a great, another great job. And on the, on the 4th, I was, I rode in the parade in a 1954 Chevy convertible. It was awesome. It was just great. It was great to ride in. And it was owned by a gentleman named Dave, a local businessman, and I thanked him immensely on our behalf. And before I close up, I want to remember the people in Uvalde. And I haven't seen the entire interview with some people, but what a catastrophe. I've been to a lot of major scenes in this community, but I cannot imagine what those young officers had to go through in the community to deal with, to deal with a scene like that. And I knew the first day, the first few hours, how terrible it was gonna be just by, by what they were saying. And my wife really didn't understand that. But when they couldn't give notification, there had to be some serious, serious problems with how these young people were terminated. And that's it for me. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Escobedo?
Hi. It's been a busy couple of weeks. Thank you, Madam Mayor. On May 19, I was invited as a guest speaker for the Parren Institute of Quality Education at Adams Elementary School. On June 1, I attend the Elks Rodeo Meet and Greet Reception. On June 3, I attend the Elks Rodeo. A lot of fun, great stories, just, it was a really great experience as, you know, it's already time. So on the 4th, I attend the Elks Rodeo Parade, and thank you again, thank you to Dave for allowing us to use his ride. Beautiful. I think it's a, also, on June 6, I attend, I was invited to be as a guest speaker at the red designation ceremony at Adams Elementary School, which means that elementary school students who are, whose mother tongue is Spanish or Mixteco, they transition from taking basic English classes to now with the native speakers. So that was really interesting to see all these kids being recognized for that, and be encouraged to learn, be proficient in English, and at the same time, keeping their mother tongue in Spanish or Mixteco and/or Mixteco. And I was, I think that, I would like to also request to dedicate today's meeting to the Uvalde shooting. I think that was, it's just shocking, and I would like to, in memory of those people and those kids that lost their life. Thank you.
Thank you. On May 17, I did the Ben Hayes Show, did, testified at the Board of Supervisors meeting. On May 18, I attended the opioid project meeting down in Buellton that Bill Brown is putting on. On the 19th, I attend SBAG meeting, and in the afternoon, APCD Board meeting. On the 23rd, I met with the PAC meeting that are trying to put together Performing Arts Center here in Santa Maria. On the 25th, I attended the Santa Maria Guadal Puy Economic Roundtable. And let's see, Marion, then Marion Foundation Board of Directors meeting. On the 26th, I had my mayor's task force on youth safety meeting. And we had many of the nonprofits there to discuss about what is going on in Santa Maria, what the gaps are, and what we need to be doing. And on the 27th, I attended the library ad hoc meeting, which is Santa Barbara County, and then the West Coast Customs Media Dinner, and then the cruise afterwards, and the car show on Saturday and Sunday. On the 30th, Memorial Day service and wreath presentation at the cemetery, and presented one of our wreaths from the city of Santa Maria. On May 31, I gave the oath of office to Casey Stone, who is now a new attorney, and didn't recog-
I was here for that.
Yes, you were. I didn't recognize he was dressed up in a suit. I usually see him in his uniform. On June 1, I attended the library ad hoc meeting with Santa Barbara County, did the Elks Rodeo Meet and Greet Reception. And on June 3, again, the Elks Rodeo VIP reception. On the 4th, we attended, all of us attended the rodeo parade, and I rode in a 1928 Ford. Thank you, Brian Weber. It was, it was, it was really neat. And that is it. So ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourning this meeting in the residence of Uvalde, Texas. Thank you.